Okay, we are there. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Nathan Ewing?
Yes.
And do you prefer Reverend, or do you have a title?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay. Certainly, I want to make sure that you feel welcome. As for everybody here, make sure if you want to speak that the light is on. And Reverend, if you'd also like to give us some idea of what your congregation is, then lead us in our invocation.
Sure.
Please proceed.
No, I appreciate that. Nathan Ewing, lifelong resident of Liberty, went to Liberty High School, William Jewell College, still live here with my family. And so it's a real honor to be able to be here this evening and give the invocation. First time doing this. I'm pastor of Bethany Fellowship Church here in Liberty. We're just at the corner of 33 and 69 Highway. And just been there now for about six months or so. So, happy to be here. You know, in the scriptures, it tells us that we are supposed to be subject to the governing authorities. And that God puts authority in place. He's the one that installs leadership. And no matter what that looks like, which means that all of you are here for a very specific reason and purpose. And as a husband, as a father, as a pastor, one of the things that I pray often is James 1:5 where it says, "If any of you lack wisdom, just let him ask." Right? Let him ask God, who gives generously without reproach, and he will be given to him. And if there's one thing that's been proven through history and then also through the scriptures, that great men and women of faith have not relied on their own wisdom, but have cried out and wanted to know what God had to say on the matter. And so that's what we want to do here this morning. So, we'll just offer this prayer. Heavenly Father, first, we thank you that we have the opportunity to approach you openly to ask for your blessing. And I know that, at least me personally, I'm grateful that they have requested it. We thank you for that humility. And as you have laid this mantle of leadership upon this group, we ask that you provide the wisdom and the insight that are needed to carry it out. We know that you are not a God of confusion, but a God of order. So in these times of uncertainty, please provide clarity and help them as they navigate this unique time in which we live, as they serve to better our community. And give them the resolve to do what's right, even if it's unpopular. And give them the discernment in the matters that they're discussing tonight. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte. Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
That brings us to the approval of our agenda. One of, is there a motion related to the agenda? Then we'll open it up for any changes. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda discussion. It's come to my attention that staff has requested that item number 2023-338, under our regular agenda, be moved to a future meeting. They still have a bit of work they would like to do on that. There's still some work to be done. So I guess I'll just propose that we remove that from this evening's agenda.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That brings us back to now approval of the agenda as amended. Are there any other changes, additions, or any other alterations or discussion to be had? Commissioner Wagner.
I'll close.
I'm sorry, but there's no other comments? Everybody's good? Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That brings us to the public comments portion of our agenda. If there is any member of the public who would care to address the commission, if you do wish to do so, please come up to the podium, press the button so that the green light around the microphone is illuminated, state your name, and then proceed with whatever remarks you would like to make to the commission. Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on the agenda this evening. The first is commission meeting minutes from October 25th and October 26th. And Resolution 2023-343 approving invoice payments from October 26th through November 3rd. There are 311 invoices totaling $543,297.03.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-344. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-344 is approving the endpoints payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from October 26th through November 3rd. There are 11 invoices totaling $7,895.14.
Commissioner Wagner.
I think you move to approve 2023-344.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-344. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda. That is 2023 Ordinance 40. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 40 is the consideration of re-appropriating and revising the adopted budget in the amount of $6,000 in the use tax parks and trails fund. This is not uncommon at the end of the year when we have funds that we move from one line item to another to ensure that we have adequate funding for the remainder of the year. And the county auditor is here and provide additional information to the commission.
Mrs. Auditor, please proceed.
Yes, Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor. 2023 Ordinance 40. As Administrator indicated, you know, we're keeping a close eye on payroll and all expenditure budgets as we near the end of the year. And so this is essentially just an item to make sure we have enough budget to make payroll for the rest of the year in our use tax trails fund. Essentially, what we're doing is re-appropriating surplus interest. To date, we've had essentially $24,000 of interest has been allocated to this fund proportionally based on its cash balance. And so we have essentially a surplus of $18,000. We're asking to re-appropriate $6,000 of that to essentially meet the projected shortfall of around $6,000 for the health insurance line specifically. And as you can see in the packet, the only reason it's really short is because you have changes throughout the year based on plan selections and the employee mix. And so that's why we're where we're at. But, you know, not a big reappropriation, but we'd ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the auditor? Seeing none, is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Move to approve 2023 Ordinance 40.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 40. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter. Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next on our regular agenda is 2023 Ordinance 41. Administrator?
23, excuse me, 2023 Ordinance 41 is the consideration of re-appropriating and revising the current adopted budget in the amount of $447,519. This is for the Sheriff's Office for vehicles. And we've asked Captain Agderian to come forward and provide information to the commission.
Proceed, Captain.
Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. Before I get to this explanation, I'd like to thank the commission and the county administrator and all of her staff for just the hard work they've been doing with the Sheriff's Office in the last three weeks or so. It's been kind of insane. And in a time of the year that, as the auditor said, we're looking closely at the budget to make sure that we are getting in under the wire, and then I come before you tonight with this request. So I know how this looks. We are asking for this budget reappropriation because we are looking ahead into 2024, and it is going to be next to impossible for us to add to our fleet for next year the patrol SUVs from Ford that we typically purchase. We can't even order them right now. The ordering has been closed. We don't know when it's going to reopen. And we have identified a patrol vehicle from Dodge, as opposed to Ford this time, that will work for another function within the Sheriff's Office, but not like a road patrol vehicle. So these are going to be, they're on the lot, they're available now, they're patrol vehicles, but we will outfit them as supervisor vehicles so that we can get them into service quickly. They're here now, and we were really hoping that we could do this budget reappropriation so that we could purchase them now, knowing full well that next year it will be a significant difference in our use tax budget if we're to go that way. So, we know how this looks. We're trying to be responsible. We're trying to make sure that we grab vehicles where we can at the lowest cost that we can. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Withington.
You were going, are these going to be Dodge Chargers? Or what are they going to be?
No, I wish, right? We did have one person say the only thing he wanted for his birthday was a Hellcat to patrol in. I quickly told him that was not going to happen.
So what vehicles are they going to be?
These are Dodge Durangos.
Durangos.
So it's still an SUV. And they are pursuit, you know, you can use them as a patrol vehicle, they're pursuit capable, but that's not what we're going to use them for. We're going to take our currently, some supervisors that have the Ford Interceptor SUV that's outfitted as a patrol vehicle, we're going to rotate those to the guys that are on patrol, and then give the supervisors more of a slick version of a vehicle. So we don't have to put so much of a capital investment into these vehicles.
Okay, is GM, I know you guys have some Tahos, were those not the, were these cheaper?
I don't know about the cost. I know about the availability that we were contacted, well, I was contacted by our fleet manager, and he advised that, hey, they've got them.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Always good to see you, Captain. So, my question is just how dollars get moved around? And particularly, when I see a reappropriation, that means whatever was originally budgeted is now being changed. So what are we relinquishing in order to allow for the purchases of these vehicles? And then what does that mean for the 2024 budget, if anything?
Sure. I would defer to the auditor for an in-depth answer to that. But basically, I worked with Auditor Hurlbert to determine whether or not this was even feasible. It's never, I've never known us to even consider a request like this, bringing a request like this. So, to my understanding, there is currently, and Auditor Hurlbert, please correct me if I'm wrong, there is currently enough unencumbered use tax money now that we can move that to reappropriate the current budget at the very end of the year, purchase these vehicles, and then next year, our, the adopted budget would reflect less this amount in whatever use tax money would be proposed for the Sheriff's Office. Is that correct?
Correct. And that would be for vehicles.
Yes.
So basically, we're using reserves, this year's reserves, out of the Capital 300 account.
Okay.
To forward fund these vehicles. And then next year, we've already reduced the request for the vehicle amount in next year. So...
Which then repopulates the reserve? Is that...
Right. So then it will fall back down because we didn't, we certainly didn't take the funds for their 24 vehicles and do another project or allocate those funds. It will then basically go back into fund balance.
So, okay, so basically, we're utilizing the cash on hand to take care of that, and we will refill it with the next budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Except that I also caused her an incredible amount of work on the, and I know, and I know, and so I do appreciate that. Yeah.
You're going to give her some candy or something?
Parties. You know what? I wish Commissioner Thompson was here. We used to joke about cake parties in the training room. When you had a bad day, you could come down and have a cupcake. So, I don't know.
I'll let you figure out the cupcakes later.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson. Hold it. Could you push the button again? I didn't connect.
I'm sorry. I did something wrong.
There you go. Now you're on.
I'm not a very technical person. Okay. So then, if I'm understanding you right, that next year's budget will be reduced by the amount of what the vehicles are this year. And were you to wait till next year, what kind of an increase would you say per vehicle?
Well, right now, the issue is that if we could not take possession of these vehicles until January 1st, it would cost us another $8,000 that I know of right now, just in the finance charges that, the fee, I can't remember how the, it was a finance charge that Landmark Dodge was going to ask us to pay, just on this order, assuming that we couldn't take delivery until January. So, another $8,000 there. But if we were not to grab up these vehicles now, there's no guarantee there are going to be any. I know Highway Patrol is on a waitlist with Dodge. They've got an order of over 300 Durangos that can't be filled right now. So it's an issue of the fact that there is product now, and there isn't the money currently in the budget, but it's still going to come in under what our five-year CIP would be for vehicle and fleet management. Okay. Next year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Move to approve 2023 Ordinance 41.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 41. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next on our regular agenda is 2023-348. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-348 is amending Resolution 2022-391 by reducing an ARPA project authorization by $1,4875.53, leaving a project budget of $5,925,259.47.
Thank you. Discussion? Is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-348.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-348. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next item on our agenda is 2023-349. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-349 is approving an emergency purchase with Sidaphtic Incorporated for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $1,478,508.43.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner, excuse me, Commissioner Withington, are you seeking recognition?
No.
Okay. In that case, Commissioner Wagner, you are next. Too many W's, it's two, and it mixes me up totally. So Commissioner Wagner, I'll recognize you.
Sure. I will make a motion. Move to approve 2023-349.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-349. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next item is 2023-347. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-347 is the consideration of approving the county's intent to proceed with the Esri Small Government Enterprise Agreement for Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated. This is with our information technology and our GIS team. I'd like to introduce Sarah Rose, who is our GIS manager, to provide some information to the commission.
Thank you. Please proceed, and don't forget to turn your microphone on.
Hi, Sarah Rose, GIS Supervisor. I'm here to talk about the Esri software package. Kevin Shaw, our IT Director, announced it several sessions ago in his department overview, and I am here just to give a brief overview of the current state of GIS in Clay County and the exciting and new possible capabilities we'll have with this new software package. So for those of you who don't know what GIS is, it stands for Geographic Information Systems. Basically, we make map layers and provide them to the internal and the public. It's made up of people, data, methods, hardware, and software. And that's why I'm here today, is for the software component. Currently, we have three different GIS departments set up in Clay County. Each department has its own embedded in itself. The assessor has one, highway has one, planning and zoning has one. We're all completely separate. We're fractured, siloed, if you will. We can't communicate with each other very well. It's a very manual process. If we need to update information, we have to actually manually upload it into our system. It's very cumbersome. Information gets very outdated very quickly. It's just not efficient, and it's problematic. So in order to correct this, our plan is, starting next year, we're going to unify the GIS department into a centralized department so we can actually pool our resources together, share them. The assessor, highway, planning, and zoning will still have their own embedded GIS texts within their own departments, but we'll be able to share the more expensive software, hardware, resources, our knowledge. It's just better for all. And then that will actually allow us to further provide GIS services in all other departments. My plan is to get it into every department possible. I also want to start collaborations with our cities and other taxing districts so that we can just streamline our services a little bit better. We'll be able to provide parcel information, ownership information instantly. North Kansas City has actually requested this, so they can actually pull it into their permitting system, so we can get the approval process for our citizens a lot faster, no matter where they live, unincorporated, incorporated, wherever. This, we'll also be able to receive stuff from other entities like North Kansas City. They're an addressing authority. We just maintain for our own records, so we can actually pull their information, just like they can pull ours seamlessly. So there is no duplication of work. We reduce redundancies. It's just operational cost savings across the board. This will then allow us to then provide even more interactive, more robust mapping services to both our internal and external citizens, other departments, so that we can just serve information faster, better. Basically, just make a more robust one-stop shop for our citizens to get information that they need where they need it. So they don't know, they don't go to 20 different places, have to call 20 different departments. It's just right there. One of the things we're trying to do right now is to show like new development areas where our economic growth is, road resurfacing, that's been a hot topic. We can show updates on projects. We can, the interactive part, I have an actual example. This is from Lake County, Illinois, and this is basically, they just do it annually. We can expand this, we can customize this however we want. I just thought this was a good example of just some stuff we can do. You can click on any kind of project you want, see what the actual, what they're doing there, how long it'll take, the estimated completion time. We can link to even more information if they want to provide documents, contact information. It's just more information, and it's just helpful to our citizens. And we are currently unable to do this with our software because we're limited in our resources. So this Esri package will actually be, will provide us the capability to serve this to our citizens. And we can, we have to get our foundation, which is why I'm here asking for the approval of the software, so we can start doing that and then start serving better products.
Commissioner Withington, are you seeking recognition?
Yeah. So I think this is great. I'm all for it. You know, our GIS is pretty embarrassing currently, so I think this is great. I do like the idea of being able to see the road resurfacing. When I look at the map right now, I can't even scroll in and see the county roads or which one is ours that we manage. So if we can make sure that the roads that the county manages are visible, that'd be great. So, yeah, I'm all for this. I think this is great. So, thank you.
Yes, definitely.
Commissioner Wagner.
I just want to say, you are clearly excited about this. If you're excited about it, I'm excited about it.
I'm very excited, slightly nervous.
All joking aside, I agree with our colleague, and, you know, I've seen Kansas City systems, Jackson County systems. I think what you have shown us tonight will blow past their systems, and so I'm very excited about that. So just keep up the good work, and I'm ready to make a motion whenever anyone wants me to...
There's still more comments, but I will come back to you. Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to ask, so say that I'm sitting at home and I get a call from a citizen, and that, which I do quite frequently, and they say, hey, our road is in the process, what's happening? Can I go on from home and access that, given the proper access information?
Yes, that is the goal. Currently, not able to. We're not set up for that. But yes, the goal is to get as much information, that, all the departments get calls on every day. We want to put that online so that no matter what time of day, you can look it up and get your answers.
Oh, great.
And get up to date. It won't be real time, but it'll be near real time. So as soon as they're done, it'll show up.
Okay. And you can see the actual progression on the repair of the road?
Yes. We could, we'll have to, again, set it up that way, but yes, foundation, we will be able to customize this and tailor this to exactly what we need.
That's fantastic. Great. Thank you very much.
I had a question. What is the structure as far as, is there a gatekeeper that kind of manages this? I'm assuming it's IT or somebody. Could you give us some idea of what that structure would look like?
Currently, we are in the process of making that centralized GIS department, and that will be the steering force for the GIS future of Clay County. We will work closely with all the departments. Again, they will have their embedded techs that we will work closely with, and we will just be the knowledge and the means to do it.
Again, I realize I'm the old guy on the board here, on the commission, but there was a time when some commissioners had a little more authority over some of the departments than was good, and I think we've resolved a lot of that with our new constitution. But it still raises the concern in my mind because some of the decisions that were made by individuals from the past were based on voting records. So that's the only thing that kind of jumped out at me was that the voting records are folded into this. I don't have a tremendous amount of heartburn, but I feel as though I have to at least make some reference to some of the abuses in the past. And the thing is, it's not as though I have some suspicion that it's going to happen again or on this board, but we do make these rules not necessarily for the current office holders, but for future office holders whom we have no idea. So I just say that as just raising the issue and see if there are any precautions or if there's some way to get around that. Administrator, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I want to clarify, anyone that's home or concerned about individuality of, you know, an individual or household's data, that will not be part of this. We will not drill down to individuals or individual parcels. And so people's individual information, privacy. Now, that being said, however, parcel information is something is a matter of a public record, and we're sort of going to be looking at how do we incorporate that, how do we make it easier. And so what we've introduced to you tonight is part of the introduction going into the budget process, because forming this new GIS department is part of the restructuring in the 2024 budget and creating this department that will function as an internal service provider to all the departments when it comes to GIS and data and knowledge information, and how do we share it across the organization and to our citizens. But I want to rest assured, you know, there is private information that will not be tied to individuals or parcels.
And I just bring that up mainly because it is another contingency, and I was confident it was being considered and considered in going forward, but I felt I needed to give it some voice. Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, one other thing. On this, will you guys be able to, for like the different layers, put down like you could select pending development or completed development? So that way, if we have a case that comes before the Planning and Zoning Committee, you could go out there and see where exactly that is and stuff like that?
Yes, that's the plan. I've been talking to Kip about that, and we've got a plan going forward.
And would you also be able to go out there and see the plans if you click on it? And because right now I'm looking at Kansas City, Missouri's development tracker. Now, I think Kansas City sucks at a lot of things, but this is something they're really good at. Their development tracker, so like if you click on it, you can see what stage of the process it is. Is that something that we could see on our system?
Yes, currently, right now, no. Goal-wise, yes. That is one of my actually big goals, and that plating process is one of the things that's been redundantly duplicated by three different, four different departments, and we're trying to stop that. It should be done once and then filter through down to the departments. So that is one of the main goals.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
First of all, great presentation. I appreciate your enthusiasm for this topic. I'm all for this. I think it's great. I think it's long overdue. I think most people agree we should have had this a long time ago. But this is one of those things where I think I've talked a lot about rebranding our county and basically putting on our big boy pants and start acting like a class one county. This is one of those things that does that. It moves us forward to a real county. It kind of, pun intended, puts us on the map as, hey, you know, we know what we're doing here, and our operations are professional and how they should be. And so I think this is one of those things that puts us in that direction. So I appreciate the work on this, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just to, I was actually going to hopefully answer one of your concerns. I would assume since this is by parcel, and I'm using the Jackson County system as an example, if I go to a parcel in the Jackson County system, it will tell me who my elected officials are, right? And that's the sort of information you pull down probably from an election board as opposed to can I get voter information or can I find out the voting record of the person who owns this particular parcel? I think that was sort of some of the issue in the past, and so...
Absolutely. We certainly want to put, you know, districts and not just necessarily county commissioners, but if they're inside the city limits, then who is their city council member or what, you know, who's their Missouri House representative and on and on. So those are all layers that we can provide sort of an easy access for our residents. If they're looking for information, we want to have it available to them that's easy to get to.
Right. But as opposed to a list builder of some kind, right? So I just felt compelled to at least mention that. So thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, I will ask for a motion related to this. Is there a motion?
Yes, move to approve 2023-347.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-347. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
We did, of course, remove 2023-338 when we approved the agenda. That brings us to our next item, which is 2023-346. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-346 is approval of a supplemental fee request for an ARPA stormwater project for Brushy Creek at Northeast 137th, 136th. This is with CFS engineers, and Highway Administrator Griffin is here to provide information about that project.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. This is the request for a supplemental contract to CFS Engineering for an ARPA stormwater project at Brushy Creek at Northeast 137th and Northeast 136th Street. The total amount of the supplemental request is $19,606. CFS Engineering was asked to survey this area that's shown on the map, which is west of a highway on both 136th and 137th Streets. The corridor here experiences frequent flooding, and there is also a low water crossing there that floods with almost every rain. In addition to the flooding that occurs, it also, the stormwater also frequently deposits storm debris on the roadway and across the bridge and causes a variety of problems there. This is the map, and the low water crossing is shown in the red square and the little spot on the green. And the area presented several challenges to CFS as they started designing this project. I'm going to zoom in on that area, but I'm going to, so it will fit on the screen, I'm going to turn it one quarter turn to the right. So the top of the screen now becomes the right side of the screen. So it's a little bit different. So you can see that there are several curves in the road, and initially, we asked that CFS design a crossing in roadway that would straighten the road and move the crossing slightly to the east of where it was originally. That required, as they looked at it, a longer structure because of the width of the stream at that location as opposed to where the current low water crossing is. It also, this plan disrupted stormwater drainage that goes to the house on the right, which sits lower than the roadway. It required quite a bit of additional right-of-way acquisition for the county, and there would be at least one utility line that had to be moved to do this. And in addition, there is a shale ledge at this location that would, it's about, the bank stands about 20 feet taller than the road, and the whole rock ledge, that shale ledge, would have had to been dug out completely, adding a lot of complexity and cost to the project. So we asked them to take another look at it to minimize all those challenges and see what they came up with. And the preliminary approximation of the final design is here. You can see that it avoids removing the shale ledge. It doesn't require the moving of any utility lines, and it doesn't disrupt the stormwater drainage system for the house there on the right side of the screen. The crossing will be in about the same place as where it is now, but it will be raised substantially higher than the, than the stream bed, obviously. It will be raised up quite a bit. And the new bridge will be actually about three times longer than the current bridge. The current bridge is about, is just under 50 feet. The new bridge will be about 140 feet long, and it will be a standard girder bridge. We also asked them to flatten the curves just a little bit. It's not, it's difficult to see on here, but it does take the sharpness out of a couple of the curves with this design, and that provides a safer crossing and better roadway access as you approach the bridge. With these changes to the plan, design, and the revisions required, for the bridge itself and for the roadwork, there is an increased cost of $29,606 for this part of this project. So the rest of the project was that we asked CFS Engineering to survey this whole corridor shown in the red, in the red box. There are two locations that they determined that need additional stormwater drainage provision made to prevent flooding. The first is an existing box culvert at this location. It's right now a seven-foot tall by 18-foot wide concrete box. It's about half the width of the actual stream. So in order to accommodate that, the opening, the crossing there at the stream needs to be basically doubled in size. We took a look at replacing the existing box with a double-cell box and with a standard girder bridge and determined that the standard girder bridge was the better option, partly because of cost and also partly because the double-cell box would catch storm debris on that center wall of the box as it, as the stormwater brings debris down. The bridge will be, the new bridge that will be placed there will be a standard girder bridge. You use standard county plans, which further reduces the cost of design because the basic design is already in place. It's one that the county has used several times. There will also be some minor ditch work from Hillcrest Drive down towards the box to get drainage from that intersection more adequately and better for the system. The second place where CFS is recommending a change is right here at this southern curve. A drainage structure needs to be placed here. This curve floods on a regular basis. Floodwaters overtop the road for short periods of time. Basically, they're going to install a drainage line to probably, still under determination, but probably an underground tube that will go from under the road down to the creek nearby. Because these two simple redesigns were simple, the cost for this part of the project will be reduced by $10,000, bringing the net result cost to $19,606 additional dollars that are needed to finish the design. We, CFS expects to finish the design by the end of the year or January at the latest, and once we have all the design done, we'll come back to commission with a construction contract, and you'll see more details about it then. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Thanks, Terry. I'm certainly glad we can at least save a little money in one place, even though it costs a little bit more. But the change is somewhat substantial. And so I guess my question is really, when we get to a construction phase, do, I assume we had a placeholder for what we thought that construction would be. What should we anticipate? And I know it can't be exact, but I am wondering what we would anticipate as far as construction.
We think we will be close to on target when we're finished.
Okay.
Maybe we may go slightly over what the original target amount was. I'll know more in January.
Okay. But nothing that should cause us to panic to say
No, sir.
we're taking all the rest of those ARPA funds away?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Withington?
So are you guys planning on construction starting next year?
That will be dependent on the contractor's schedule. We typically use Decker Construction. They're one of our on-call engineers, and they have several projects for the county that are ARPA projects, and that will be determined once we have the plans designed and so forth. Certainly, we'll have that contract in place before the end of the year, before the end of 2024, simply because that is our deadline for all the ARPA stormwater funding. Construction will proceed as quickly as we can get to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
I'm ready to make a...
I see no other questions or comments, so please proceed.
Very good. Move to approve 2023-346.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-346. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That brings us to the final item on our agenda, on our regular agenda, I should say, 2023-345. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-345 is a consideration of appointments to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board. There are two vacancies currently on the board. The resolution would appoint Summer O'Hara and Darren Griesmer to those unexpired terms. Those terms would expire January 31st, 2025.
Thank you. I place these names and nominations after consulting with not only the Administrator, of course, as per our constitution, but also the Chair and members of the DDRB. Those names have been circulated, I think, through the commission for their review. I guess the thing is, I just, you know, are there any questions that can be answered on these? By the way, I don't think I did mention that these are due to the two members that are leaving, leaving before the end of their term. So that is why this is out of sequence generally. These seats come due at end of year, at least a lot of them do. So that's why we're a little out of schedule on this. With that, is there a motion? Commissioner
Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-345.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-345. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That completes our regular agenda for this evening. That brings us to discussion items. First item under discussion is KCTA/Arpa/Parks. Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. We have been before the commission to talk about the KCTA project and the cleanup of the facility and allocation of ARPA funding. So I'd like to introduce John Davis, our Deputy Parks Director, who will again do a recap for the commission. I believe we have members from the KCTA that's also here available this evening to talk about their plan going forward. Then I'll turn it over to John.
John Davis, Deputy Parks Director. As I said, a few weeks ago, we brought forth a ARPA request for cleanup of clay pitons of the KCTA trap range. At commission's request, we did. Retired Director Driscoll and I attended the last board meeting of KCTA and inquired about their financial ability to complete this project and some of the questions about biodegradable targets. They have prepared a report, and we do have representatives of KCTA here. If you have any further questions to me, I'll turn it over to them.
Are there any questions before we turn it over to the people from KCTA? Seeing none, we'd certainly like to hear from the members here from that organization.
I believe Lindsey Baxter with the KCTA boards can speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lindsey Baxter. I'm wearing a different hat tonight with the KCTA. I will spare you going through page by page of the report, but I hope each of you have had an opportunity to review that. Many current board members, as well as former board members who have been a part of the KCTA for a very long time since its inception, sat down at a table to try and come up with a plan and hopefully answer some of the questions you had during the last discussion on this topic. If you are unfamiliar with KCTA, we have been located at the Smithville Lake location since 1986. Excuse me. All of the improvements and constructions to that facility to date have been made through revenue to the club as well as private donations. We would like to think that a 37-year tenant has been a pretty good relationship at that facility. We shared a pretty simplistic financial summary with you to show we don't have the funding likely to accomplish this project. A majority of our funds are consumed each year, and it is typically a break even profit loss. There was some discussion about what red lead reclamation looked like for the facility and when that happens. So we included an entire summary there that shows well over So, we included an entire summary there that shows well over $300,000 worth of capital improvements that have occurred to the facility with the use of those funds. Additional funding remaining from lead reclamation goes directly toward overhead costs and staffing of the facility. We are one of the very few shooting ranges in the state of Missouri who have a full-time manager on site. Previously, when we were throwing more targets than we do now, we would do lead reclamation every five years. That typically occurs about every seven, and we should be due for that, we would anticipate, in the next year or two. We wanted to highlight some of our KCTA partnerships with you. We have a great relationship with our local FFA and 4H chapters, our local area schools, the Northland Therapeutic Riding Center, the Surtoma Foundation, the Kansas City, Kansas Firefighters Relief Association, American Diabetes Association, and the Kansas City Corporate Challenge. When we reviewed the report that was given by, I believe, Burns &amp; McDonald on estimate, estimations of total cost, we had some former board members sit down and look at all of the targets that have ever been purchased at our facility in the 37-year history. And we approximate that the cost of that is overestimated by roughly 65%. We did a virtually pretty simplistic math breakdown of why we came to those figures. And I think it's worth noting that even with the figures we provided to you, we have sold pallets to some of the other smaller clubs in the state, and there's a need for consideration that some target debris turns to complete dust. That's how we prefer all of them to turn, but it doesn't always happen that way. We also, in reviewing it, thought it was worth noting, we did not believe that there was an environmental concern with the target debris's because all of the testing for heavy metals concluded that it was below the necessary average or numbers for disposal. Our solutions are for this to occur as quickly as possible to receive ARPA funding from the county. I know that there was a conversation about biodegradable targets during your guys' last discussion, and those are a thing of the past, mainly because of the very high sulfur content that they held. It showed to kill all vegetation in the areas. It corroded the target-throwing machines, and ultimately was a target that was never accepted by shooters. However, White Flyer, who has recently been acquired by Winchester, has created what they're calling an eco-friendly target. It has now been, I believe, available in Europe, and they anticipate it to be released in the United States in two years, give or take time. So, our solution would be that when those are readily available, those would become the targets that we begin throwing. I believe that they say that those completely degrade into the ground within a 10-year period, and I believe the pitch content is a tree-derived pitch rather than a petroleum-derived pitch. So, the chemical makeup of those is significantly different. Those have been tested at the American Grand this year by some of the best shooters in the nation and did receive a positive response from shooters. They felt that they were able to hit the targets well, as opposed to how they felt about those biodegradable targets. So, we anticipate those will be successful. The plan in the interim is, with the assistance of ARPA funding from the county, we would clean up the debris's that currently exist. Once those would be taken away from the facility during the interim until those eco-friendly targets would come, become available, we would be responsible as an organization to clean up debris's in that two-year interim. I will, I hope that those answered all of your questions. We sure appreciate the opportunity to come present before you. We appreciated the opportunity to speak with John, with Parks and Rec. We've enjoyed the partnership. We really like the ability to teach the different shotgun-shooting disciplines that we're able to teach on the facility, and we hope we're able to continue to do that in the future. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions, and because of my newness to the world of trapshooting and the KCTA Board, we do have some other members that I may defer to.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and thank you very much for being here this evening. Actually, this is more of a question for John, actually, but I wanted to hear and take another look at this report before asking. So, as was noted, there is a discrepancy of about 65% in terms of the tonnage that may be of issue here. The Burns &amp; McDonald's suggests 12,600 tons of waste material. We're somewhere around 4,400 tons, based on what is essentially the expected throughput over time as to what it would have made. My question is, John, based on prior presentations, what I understand is the $600,000 that was kind of thrown out there back four years ago is probably, in today's dollars, not enough to do 12,600 tons of waste materials. So, my question is, how much waste material do we intend to get, and will we be going by their numbers, our numbers, or a different number?
Answer is, as much as we can with $600,000, and we'll have to base it up. I understand their calculations and all that, but we're going to have to go off of our engineers because I can't be 44, I believe, 4,400 tons is what they're figuring. We're going to have to be accountable to, we have to be prepared for a larger load. So, from what we took, our samples from the last, when we talked at the last meeting, Park staff took out samples, three loads, and from what we're seeing, it's pretty consistent what the engineers have said. So, it's my recommendation, we need to stick with the 12,600-ton plan.
Okay.
And if we have to span it out, if it goes over 12, that 600,000, then we'll have to put it in the regular budget on, down the line.
Okay. And last question is, as far as the Army Corps of Engineers is concerned, their expectation is, we've shown them, we've shown them 12,600 tons' worth of material, that is what they are expecting as far as removal. Is that safe to say, or correct me if I'm wrong?
It's not the tonnage. They just want it all of it cleaned up.
For them, it's the aesthetic.
So, whatever it is, they want it all cleaned up.
Yeah. So, as far as they're concerned, it's the aesthetic as opposed to anything else?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. First of all, I appreciate this, the written report, very informative, good information. Couple things. First, to follow up on Commissioner Wagner's comments about the tonnage. So, my understanding is it's not just the targets and the loads and so forth, but it's also the dirt that has to be removed as well. Is that correct?
No. It's, there may be a little bit of dirt mixed in with it, as far as we can tell. It's mostly clay pigeon and plastic wadding from shotgun shells.
So, there's not like any kind of contaminated dirt or anything that they're worried about that we need to take?
No. That's not what there's, no.
And then, are there any environmental issues that they have?
That it's trash.
Pardon me?
It's trash. That's the way they see it.
Right. So, you pick up the trash and throw it away or not?
Sorry. It does con- contain trace amounts of lead and barium, which, that's what the lab reports have said, so.
Okay. And then, how often is it mined for lead?
When we were throwing a lot more targets every five years, typically now with the 750,000 target range, about every seven.
That's it, huh?
I wish it was more frequently.
Yeah. And approximately, how much money does that generate each time you have it mined?
Depends on how many targets are thrown. I am going to
Just ballpark. I'm just wondering.
200? Does that, no. 100,000?
About $100,000 each time you mine it?
Yes.
Roughly. I know it's a kind of a guess at it. Okay. And that's the money that goes back into the, you've listed several things on your report. That's where that money came from for
Those capital improvements, yes.
Improvements, yeah.
All of which are owned by the county. The only thing on that property owned by KCTA is the private property, or personal property, excuse me.
And I know that this isn't, this isn't you or anybody here that, that created this problem, and this has happened over a long time. But, do you know why we got to this position? Why do we have so much trash out there?
So, speculation, because you're right, none of us were a part of this whenever it began, is I believe at the time that the lease was signed, whatever amount of years ago it was, I don't believe that it specified anything about target debris's at the time. And so, I think the thought process was, for many years, likely, it's not an issue, it's over the hill, you can't see it, it's not impacting anyone, and so, that's, I'm going to speculate that that's the reason that it sits out there today.
Okay. And then, if this is not hazardous material or an environmental concern, would there, would there be any reason why we couldn't, and this is outside, bury it? I guess this would be more for John, but would, would they allow us to just bury this stuff?
The engineers recommended taking it to the landfill. If you bury it
Which is what they're going to do at the landfill?
Right. But if you bury it at Smithville Lake, all you're doing is, it's still on core property.
Right.
So, I don't think they would accept burying it on core property.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, the, I think the big thing here is that there's been talk about removal of that for a number of years. But I think in the past, and, and I would ask some of the senior members that might give us a, a look at that, how long ago was it that they removed, originally removed that, those targets? Didn't, wasn't that done in the past at some time, or was it never?
Just as a reminder, those coming to address the Commission, please do identify yourself for the audio recordings and then make your statement.
My name's Randall Crawford. I'm the past president of the KCTA for well in excess of 15 years. I've been involved with relocation. We came from Elliott Shooting Park, 1985, restarted construction, and so, I've got, I've been involved with this since day one. I was involved with the committee when we selected a site to relocate to, when Clay County offered this to us. So, getting back to your question on the target debris cleanup, it, what, what kind of amazes me is, we've been inspected by the Corps for every year for 37 years now. It wasn't until 2019 that this was even raised as an issue. There has been no target debris removal done ever, except on just a very limited basis, done by the Parks Department in either 2019 or 2020, some of that time period, John? Did you call a couple truckloads out?
No, we did that.
You did that this year? Okay.
Just say, if you're going to respond, please come up and do it on the microphone so that the, so the recordings reflect what's going on.
Okay. So, as, as far as target debris removal, the limited amount that's been done was just through the Parks Department apparently this year. And, you know, we were totally surprised when we presented this in 2019 that this was even an issue. My opinion is, I was involved in the drafting or the negotiation of the lease back when we did it, leased in 1986, that target debris removal was never an issue, never a consideration, never on anybody's radar at all. Pretty well-known, if you've got a trapshooting facility, you're shooting clay targets, you're going to have clay targets out on the ground. This was known going into it. It was never seen as an issue by the KCTA at all. The lead was an issue, and that's why our lease provides that we have the right to reclaim that lead and use those funds. So, I've talked a little bit more than said in a little other things, but I think that answers the question on how much target debris removal has been to date.
Okay. So, that, that's very interesting, because if the Corps has been going out there and doing the inspection, and they've never said anything till 19, all of a sudden now, of course, that's been building up and all that time. But, but I will tell you, I'd like for all of you to take the time and go out there one day, because that place is pristine. You don't see shells laying, cartridges laying around. As soon as somebody's through shooting, they're, they're either keeping them because they reload their own shells, or the staff is picking them up immediately after someone's through shooting. Nothing lays on the ground. The only thing are the wads that lay that come out of the end of that gun, and those are all swept up by the staff as well. From time to time, they get those. So, that is the only thing that is left out there. And, and one thing I want to say, if you noticed when they said the past use for lead reclamation funds, just recently, the roof on that place was so bad, you know, and the county has no hand in it evidently, and they paid for their own roof, brand-new roof. Interior, brand-new interior, new flooring, new paint, you know, all that inside, all paid for by the reclamation. The managers paid for by the reclamation. Nothing goes to waste. There, there's no, you know, they're not partying out there and having big parties every evening after they shoot or anything. It is just solidly put back into that place. They've improved that building tenfold. Everything that gets done out there comes out of their pocket. So, you know, I, the thing that concerns me the most, you, you think about how much money, I think, I, I asked this evening and asked Victor about how much money was spent to build that restaurant out there in the lake, at the lake. 800 and some, $100,000, $800,000 or more to put that in, completely redo the interior, and we have gotten zero back on it. These folks, not just because I shoot out there, doesn't have a darn thing to do with it, but fair is fair. We pour a lot of money into the lake as far as the marina, the golf course, that we have to keep subsidizing out there at the, at the marina. We, we just paid a fortune for two pontoon boats, you know? And now, we'll get money back for them, but we have to do maintenance for them. We, all that has to be taken care of and into consideration. This is the first time these folks have come to this Commission and said, I need something done. If, and they have committed, because I've talked to them personally, they have committed that once this is cleaned at the Army Corps of Engineers' request, once this is picked up, from that point forward, they will take that monkey on their back, and then they will start using the biodegradable targets, which I hope are easier to break than the others, but that's another story. So, I just, I just want to plead their case, if you will, that no special interests on my part, but I see how it's managed, I see the good that it does. The 4H kids come up there every Thursday and shoot, and then they have huge shoots, you know, probably 300 kids or more. They have the Surtoma come up, they have their fundraisers there, that riding facility that helps handicap children and all, which is a heartbreaker to talk about. But those kids, they have huge fundraiser up there, which really subsidizes their facility for a year. There is so much good that's done, not to discount the fact that you have all of the people from Clay County, some from Platte, you know, some all around, that come and shoot at this facility. It is a service to the county, the same way the marina is a service, the same way the golf course is a service, Jesse James Farm, all of that that we pay through the nose for is all a service to the people that live in this county, and this is one of them. But the monkey is all on their back, plus they pay us every quarter so much money, which we don't get from anything else. So, I applaud that you gentlemen have come. I appreciate very much this that you've done for us. And, and one last question. The difference, what do you think the difference is between the evaluation that we got from Burns &amp; McDonald and the evaluation that y'all have done?
Okay. We can only speculate as to how the Burns, or Burns &amp; McDonald that did that, how, how they arrived at those numbers. All we can tell you is, we know how many targets we've purchased, okay? There can't be more targets laying on the ground than what we've purchased, and I think we've rounded up to 4,400 tons. So, we have a suspicion on how So we have a suspicion on how we think they arrived at those numbers, probably from some topography measurements that are incorrect and weren't actually done on site. I'm just speculating, I don't know that for a fact at all. But we kind of wonder if it was an aerial look at it as opposed to getting out there and really looking at it. That's, so again, speculating on how they arrived at it, I can tell you exactly how we arrived at it, because we know how many targets we've thrown.
Great, okay.
Can't be more than we've bought.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, thank you Lindsay and everybody for the presentations and the updates. And I certainly hope if it turns out that there's less out there, then there'll be less to haul out, and hopefully that means the bill's less, and that'll be great for everybody. On the ECO targets, if, if for whatever reason this availability from Europe to the US doesn't pan out, or is delayed, or they turn out to be way more expensive or whatever, you guys are good with being really specific and whatever update to the contract we do that really spells out that, that any future removal would be handled by the KCETA?
Yes, we discussed that after this cleanup is completed, with the plan to go to the eco-friendly when available, we would obviously need to have some sort of attachment memorandum of understanding between Clay County and KCETA moving forward.
Okay, and then any sense of like how frequently that would happen? Obviously, if you go to the ECO targets, then you would just at that time, I suppose, do one removal. But if it turns out to be more than two years for whatever reason, any sense of how that would be handled in terms of how often removal would happen?
It's always going to be dependent on the total amount of targets thrown, as well as future inspections by the Corps of Engineers. Randall would probably be better at giving speculation as to what kind of cleanup would look like for us in that two-year period.
No, I think Lindsay's hit the nail on the head, it comes at how many targets we throw, how many are laying out there. I mean, if it's just not even covering the ground up, it's not gonna make sense to bring in heavy equipment to do that. There's got to be some accumulation out there, whether that's two years, three years, five years, I don't know. But, and that's only if we continue to use petroleum-based pitched targets. Because if we go to the eco-friendly target, then there is no cleanup at all.
Yeah, which obviously that'll be, you know, great if and when that works out. Yeah, I just, I just wanna, I appreciate you guys with the update, and obviously we've got to get it cleaned up. Corps is basically insisting, and to this question of environmental concern, it seems to be their conclusion anyway, that there's environmental concern.
That there is no environmental concern, right? Yeah, there is no environmental concern based upon the studies.
Well, no, the report from the Corps is that there is an environmental concern.
Correct, that there is none.
No, that there is, affirmatively that there is, that is the report.
But with the measurements they did, it all is below the accepted levels. So I don't know, I think it's probably the pitch that they're talking about for the environmental concern, to be honest with you, okay?
Okay. Well, regardless, we've had a discussion before, it's been a couple months, I want to say, I feel like the conclusion of that conversation was that there is, it is the opinion of the Corps that there's an environmental concern. Whether they're right or not, I don't have the relevant expertise to judge. But regardless, we're gonna have to clean it up and remove it. I think the concern for most of us is just making sure that, you know, we don't cycle through and find ourselves in this again. Obviously, it's a big bill, and, you know, you guys are, you know, not a big for-profit operation, so we gotta make sure that we don't end up with another big bill in the future that also can't, you know, be paid by the organization. So, yeah, so the conclusion is we're gonna move to ECO as quickly as possible, we'll clean up the petroleum at that time, and we're good with a memorandum of understanding that, that really makes it pretty clear that that would be the case going forward.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal, thanks guys.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and I feel like I'm a dog with a bone on this one for some reason, but I, actually, something that our colleague just said doesn't compute with what I thought I just asked and what Commissioner Johnson asked. My understanding from our questions this evening, since dirt isn't the problem, there's nothing seeping in the ground which would suggest an environmental issue. Am I remembering correctly? Okay, so the issue is an aesthetic one, not an environmental one, which was my previous question. Did I, did I miss something?
It still contains, like I said, contaminated substances such as lead and barium that they see from the report. And they're also, it is, they declare it as trash.
But, but they're not asking us to remove the dirt that the clay pigeons are in, they are saying you need to remove the pigeons, is that?
Correct. Because most of the pigeons are laying on top of the ground, but it's not, there's not a lot of dirt mixed in with it.
Okay, okay. It still suggests to me that it's more of an aesthetic issue, but I'll drop that one for a moment. I guess my, my real concern that I just keep coming back to in my head is there's a 65% difference in how we view it and they view it, and that suggests to me either one of two things. One is either there's a larger debris field, or two, that it's deep. And it can't be deep if dirt is not the problem, so the debris field must be wider. But, so is, am I, sorry, I am just like, I'm like Encyclopedia Brown here trying to figure this out, so is it the size of the debris field that is the discrepancy here?
I'm not sure.
I'm getting questioned. Well, so I'll put it this way. Oh, if you've got someone who can explain it, that would be great, because there could only be, in my opinion, one reason why these numbers are so widely different. And so if this gentleman can...
Yes, my name's Stephen Ricketts, I'm a past board member of KCETA, shoot up there since 1988, so very familiar with it, done a lot of maintenance over the years, from trap machines to the target debris, you name it, even the lead reclamation. I did a little calculating from the volumes that was in the Burns McDonald report. What I come up with, the, and I can't think of the cubic yards off the top of my head right off from the report, but it would amount it to, it's 800 feet from one end to the other on the nine trap fields. The target debris would be 50 feet wide, six foot deep. Please drive up there and look, there's not that much material there. It would have equaled about 2.9 million targets thrown a year for 37 years, based on their calculations. We just don't see how there's that much there. We went back and looked for 37 years, just to round it off, about a million targets a year, and that's how we come up with our numbers. We know what a trailer load of targets weighs, and we based it on that. So it's about five trailer loads of targets for a million targets, so approximately five plus trailer loads a year, that's how we come up with our numbers.
But, so, I'm sorry, so, but to have a wider debris field would seem to suggest to me that you are firing at targets that are at various distances away. And, and it would have to be, for the numbers that were, that have been suggested to us, that distance would have to be fairly large to accommodate that much debris. Am I, I am a novice at this, I am not my colleague here, and so I am just trying to understand the numbers and how all these things work, to get to this number that we're trying to talk about tonight.
Okay, so the, the area that the targets land, from the house where the machine is that throws the targets, there's a, there's a parameters for how we set the targets, the distance that they travel. That's 50 yards from the, from that house to the outer edges of that target debris field. Now, there are targets beyond that 50 yards. We used to take and level the target debris out, and we just took it over the bank. So it's all in one place, nothing got buried, so it extended that, that area. It's all still there, it's easily accessible. But, so if you look on a satellite photo over the years, like on Google Earth, you can see how it's grown to the north, and that's why it's done that. But, so that target debris field is from that 50-yard stake back about 50 feet, that's where the targets are broken and where they fall.
Okay. So I don't want to belabor, but, so I'm gonna ask for this, because I know we have talked about this, and I expect we will have an ordinance in front of us to outlay these funds. For someone, a novice like me who thrives on the visual, if someone can show me something that suggests where these targets normally assemble, for lack of a better term, versus where we are saying we need to clean up, I think that helps me understand better why there is such a discrepancy, and what would, what, I guess in my mind, I would suggest where we spend our money. So, thank you for the explanation, and I appreciate you indulging my very rudimentary questions, as with staff as well, and I will let it go there, thank you.
Commissioner Withington.
So, I don't know who can answer this, and I don't even know who it's for, but the county's essentially the middleman here. Why, why can't the KCAT, the KCETA just lease directly from the Corps?
I would say primarily because our contract is with the Corps. And so they're not in the business of contracting with individual vendors. That's not what the Corps does. You know, they've got a kind of an umbrella contract with us, and they allow us then to subcontract with vendors.
Okay, okay.
But they do, but it is a requirement, they have to approve our subcontract, right?
Well, I, like I said last time, I think, I think this commission needs to have a serious conversation of what we're gonna do once our lease is up. I mean, we are losing a ton of money, and you guys are the best group at the, at the Parks Department that I have to deal with, you guys never complain about anything, so I really appreciate, I really appreciate that. But like, like Commissioner Lawson said, you know, everybody at the marina is always talking about how bad our services are, we're losing money at the golf course every year. I think we just need to have a serious conversation, are we really gonna renew our lease? I know there's some private businesses that want to, want to take those over, I know there's some private businesses that, or I know Smithville wants to annex the entire west side of the lake area too, so I think we just need to have a serious conversation what we're gonna do in 2020, or 2029, 2030, when our lease is up, so. But I thank you guys for your presentation tonight, and like I said, you guys are, you guys are the best group that we have to deal with in the Parks Department, so thank you for that.
Thank you, we'd like to keep it that way, too. We've had a great relationship for 37 years, and we hope it goes that many more years and continues to be a great relationship. I think we provide a service that benefits everybody, particularly the youth, a lot of youth benefit from it.
And we do have a large youth shoot this weekend, so if anybody would like to come out to the facility and take a look around, we would be happy to welcome you to do so.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to clarify one thing real quick, and maybe, maybe with the county administrator, because we have talked about this a few times before, about whether there's an environmental concern out there, or whether it's just aesthetic. Because what I suggested was that if it's just aesthetic, that we don't pay hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that we challenge that obligation, whereas if it's an environmental concern, then that makes more sense that we would pick up the bill for it. My understanding was from previous discussion that we had concluded that the Corps is affirmatively asserting that there's environmental concern, maybe some water runoff concerns, et cetera, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, you are, and again, as John has indicated, the lab results came back that there, there is substance in the debris, right? There's lead, and there is barium. And so we've reached out to the Corps again, asking for clarification, and, you know, again, going back to this is Corps property. And, you know, their requirement is of us is that this needs to be cleaned up and removed. And we've asked them, what are the consequences should that not occur? And John has had those conversations with the Corps. And so it can range from the county not being renewed at the lake, it can be that, that the facility, the trap shooter wouldn't, that wouldn't allow us to have them as a subcontract to continue it. And so, you know, whether it's leaking into the lake right now, I can't answer that, and I don't know that the engineer's study that we had done indicated that. What it did indicate is the testing of it does contain contaminants.
And did we do a report in addition to the Corps, or is this just the Corps' report?
Do you want to answer that, about the Burns and Mc?
We did another lab request, or lab report, and it's coming back with the same materials.
So I guess bottom line is, at some point the Corps sent us an official report stating that it is their opinion that there's an affirmative environmental concern.
Their environmental compliance office is the one that did the inspection, and they have said that it needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, and their assertion is not simply that it's an aesthetic concern, but rather that there is some kind of water runoff with the lead or the barium, and that that poses some kind of environmental risk?
Yes, and it's that, and it's trash. They consider it trash, and they want it cleaned up.
Yeah, they do consider it debris, and our lease agreement with the Corps is that, you know, we have to leave the land the ways, sort of, that we found, you can't leave debris and trash what they, they deem as trash on the property.
Got it, and I appreciate that, I just, I just want to clarify that they are saying that there's an environmental concern in addition to an aesthetic concern, whether that's independently confirmed by us or not, that that is the assertion of the, of the Corps?
Yes. Yes, it is, there is environmental concern, and there is a trash concern, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it, because the microphones don't pick up nods, so when you can speak, that's okay, that's okay, it's easy to have the conversation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. So I'm wondering if they, what they're testing is, is actually the dirt, or it's actually just the debris itself?
The debris.
Okay, well, of course, that's gonna be an environmental issue. I guess the question we want to know is, is it getting into the dirt? And if it's not, well then, okay, it's just trash we need to pick up and get out of there, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, of course, it's gonna be environmental concern if you're, if you're testing the trash itself, but I was under the impression it was seeping into the dirt, into the lake, into that kind of stuff, but it sounds like that's not an issue, that's not what they tested for anyway.
No, the sample came from the debris field, and that's...
Oh, yeah, okay, I would expect that to be...
That's what the engineers did. KCETA actually did the same lab request several years back, and then we did one this year.
So I would certainly expect that to be environmental concern, but, but not a concern in the sense that it's seeping into the groundwater or anything like that, at least that hasn't been, that's not the allegation.
Right, we haven't tested the dirt and all that, we've tested the debris field.
So, a couple of questions, one is, so the cost, we talked about this before, I just want to nail this down. There was a $600,000 estimate that was old, and we thought that maybe it would be different now, is that, is that a current estimate to clean that up?
It's current estimate.
$600,000.
We're judging that from the landfill costs, if we do in-house, if we go out for bid and get a trucking companies to come in and we loaded ourselves into those trucks, we're hoping we're gonna come into that range. We did have a verbal quote from a trucking company that we should be still in that range.
And that's based on the 12,000 tons?
Yes, sir.
And it's possible, if what they're saying is true, is it could be significantly less than 12,000?
It's possible if we go by KCETA's board's stamp, their figures, yeah.
And the tons is actually weight, it's not volume, it's weight, in other words, so this debris will probably weigh less than dirt, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, then the last question I have is about biodegradable pigeons. You're saying they don't have, I mean, I got a box of them at home right now, it says biodegradable, I think White Dove is the one who makes it, or something like that, you're saying that's not...
They've recently discontinued the biodegradable targets, correct? I will let him speak about it, he's involved as, he's actually also our ETA delegate, so he'll be able to speak a little bit more intelligent.
What they referred to as, and there used to be, you may have a case that says biodegradable targets on it, they didn't, they no longer make that target, they went to what's now called a blackout target, and it was the same formula as the biodegradable targets, but instead of being white, they're black. They still have the sulfur content. That target will be eventually replaced by what white flyers call them the Eco Flyer, and that will be the wood-based pitched target in lieu of a petroleum-based pitched target.
Okay, let me clarify, when you say target, what does that look like? What's a target?
It's a round disc, about four inch diameter.
The round clay pigeons that get thrown in the air?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'm looking online right now at Amazon, they got white flyer, biodegradable, throwing pigeons. Environmentally friendly, non-toxic, used for trap skeets, sporting clays, and recreational shooting, these targets are usable in both handset and automatic trap machines. So I don't understand, is that, is that something?
That could be some leftover, as far as white flyer goes, the biodegradable are no longer available. The term, and part of this was, without getting into all the details, part of it was, the term biodegradable has to mean it leaves the soil natural condition, and with the sulfur in there, it doesn't... and with the sulfur in there, it doesn't do that. That's why they had to get away from that target.
Really?
And they're developing, again, what they call the Eco Flyer. There is some information on White Flyer's website about this, and that's what they're in the process now of developing and changing their plans over to in the future.
Okay. So eventually, you'll be able to get to that?
Yes. The blackout target would be very similar to what was once called the bio target.
And like Commissioner Carpenter said, until you get to that point, you'll have a plan to clean up if you use a non-biodegradable. So I just want to make it clear for everybody. I know you know this. I just, it has to be said, and I know it's none of your fault that we're in this position, but essentially what's happened is, we're going to spend up to $600,000 to go clean up some trash, that somebody came and used a facility and just left the trash there. That's essentially what it is. And I've said this before, I've been to lots of ranges, I used to run ranges. We never leave a range without cleaning up our trash. And we shoot everything. You name it, we shot it. And we clean up our trash, we clean up our targets, we clean up our water, we clean up our shelves, we clean up our cases, we clean it all up before we leave the range. It's different here for some reason, and we are now going to spend possibly $600,000 on cleanup trash. That is so difficult for me to accept, and so difficult for me to, you know, to use taxpayers' money on that. But I know you get that, but I mean, it just has to be said. We don't ever, ever want to be in this position. Again, hopefully we can make a future contract locked tight, so we're not, nobody's ever coming back to the commission and asking, hey, we need money to clean up our trash. It's actually never happened. And the last question I have for anybody who can answer this, can any one of you confirm for me whether or not Commissioner Lawson has actually hit a pigeon before? Just a head nod if you think she has. Has anybody seen that? Can anybody confirm that? Okay, we got a head nod. All right, good enough.
I did have a couple of questions, and I'd like to then go to Commissioner Lawson. First off, I think we need to specify, was that a clay pigeon in flight, or was it like on the ground? A little coup de grace thing there. Two of the things that disturbed me as we've had this going, and that is something that Commissioner Wagner has brought up, that is a discrepancy. Certainly, there's going to be some discrepancies from entity to entity, but that seems an awfully large one. And that does give me pause to figure out what that is attributable to, because we do a lot of this kind of work, and this is something that is rather unusual. The second thing, and unless you had something to address that point, I'm just kind of trying to round things off and kind of bring some points into focus.
I don't have an answer for the discrepancy. All I can go off is what engineers have assessed and measured and all that, and that's all I can go by.
Well, I mean, there's a certain amount of inescapable logic that if there were X number of clay pigeons bought, there could only be, there's a finite amount of material that could be there. That seems to be a very simple concept that makes me inclined towards that method of identifying the volume, albeit if it's spread out over a larger area, that doesn't affect that, but it may affect the cleanup costs just because of the broader area. The second thing, and it was something that has been brought by a couple of commissioners, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Carpenter, and that is the environmental concerns. Again, I don't, I do not have any more insight than anyone else as far as what is or is not an environmental concern, but the way I'm looking at it is, as someone who is a former landlord, I would have a renter in one of my places, they could have trash all over the place. It might not be, it might not be a hazard, a biohazard, but, you know, according to the lease that was signed, we would insist that it be cleaned up one way or the other. So I guess where I'm going with this is, I think we do need to know what is the environmental impact. I think that's something that needs to be identified as far as information goes, but what's being said as far as the aesthetic value of it, I get that there's maybe less urgency if it's just trash as opposed to an environmental hazard itself. However, what I would, I guess, wonder was, and I haven't looked at our lease, when it comes to what the, excuse me, when it comes to what the Army Corps can demand of us, does it matter? I mean, could they make that demand on us, whether it is a biohazard, or whether it's just simply something we might regard as trash? Can they pretty much still say, clean it up? I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know, Counselor, whether you've dealt with that part of it.
It's been a while since I've had to look at that specific on the contract, but I believe it does give them that authority.
I kind of assumed it would, but I don't know that. So those are the two observations that I come away with on this, and whether the cleanup would be more or less expensive depending on whether it was simply trash as opposed to biohazard, which would have to be handled in a different way. So, I mean, those are the issues that kind of come to my mind, that kind of, I'm kind of trying to put together what I've heard from various commissioners discussing this. Unless you have, unless you care to address it, I'm going to go to the next person. Yes?
If I could, you know, part of the driving the cost is the test, the lab test that we have done of the material. And because it does contain lead and barium, taking it to an appropriate site that we can take it to, they require the lab results. And so that helps drive the cost of being able to get rid of the debris as they determine that, you know, it qualifies whatever under their permits. And so it's not like just taking something that doesn't have lead or barium in it. And so that is driving the cost when you're going to the landfill.
And that, I mean, that does drive the, I mean, that does underscore the point the Army Corps is making, is if we cannot dispose of it as a, as simply trash, that seems to be an item in their favor of the argument that it is indeed a biohazard. Now, whether it is stable, or whether it's leaching into the soil, since they're not talking about removing the soil, the answer seems to be no. But like I said, I just want to kind of, you know, kind of bring together a couple of the issues that were raised, and just sort of, kind of tie a bow on it a little bit.
I guess, let me explain this. They consider it trash. It contains, like we said, lead, barium, and all that. We can't just dispose of it anywhere because they have deemed, you know, it's deemed that a proper disposal place for items like this is a landfill. So because, well, we can't bury it, we can't do anything else, because we're just transplanting that problem somewhere else for the future. And who knows down the line what those contaminants, they might do studies and find out they're really bad. So that's, you know, about all I can say.
I see, but at the end of the day, we don't really have much of a choice, because they are the landlords, and they have a lease, and they are going to be, I assume, asserting their rights under the lease.
Yes, sir.
Be my guess. Commissioner Lawson?
You know, the only thing I would say, I would lend a lot more credence to the figures that the Trap Range gave, only for one reason. They are very diligent about keeping a record. I've got a book that has, goes back, I don't know how many years. It's got exactly how many targets were thrown by month, by year, forever, and they keep that. And the reason that they do is that because of the contract with us, if they hit a certain number, then they start paying us for every target that's thrown, over and above their lease amount that they pay us. So I would really lean very strongly, that would be the one reason, that I would lean very strongly towards their numbers, because they do know exactly how many they've thrown every month, every year, forever. So, you know, probably, and I could see, when you look at that debris field out there, it looks like so much more, because if you're, you know, if the target's getting thrown out your back further or whatever, the way you hit it is where it falls, then it could be way out there, or it could be here. Well, if the depth in the center is really deep, you know, and that's where they tested, then they say, okay, times this many feet out, you know, and this is what it is. That may not be the truth. You'd have to bore down in multiple places to see that that field was the same depth everywhere. So I could see how that, but like I say, if they weren't so diligent about keeping the numbers every single year, every single month, to know exactly what they threw, I think you can take their numbers to the bank, frankly.
With that, I see no one else seeking recognition. Administrator, are you looking for instruction for the commission on this issue?
Yes, we are.
What would you be seeking?
So, I guess I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, you know, we would come back to the commission for you all to authorize the funds to be used, right? For this project. We're only going to spend the dollars that we need to spend. So if the number is less than what our engineers, then that is, in essence, all we're going to spend. I do think that the Park staff has really tried to, how do we minimize this cost? And so that's why they've looked at, can we use our own staff, our own equipment to at least load into trucks and save that cost, and just pay for trucks doing the hauling and the landfill cost? So we are trying to look to ways to minimize this cost as much as possible. What we're looking for from direction from the commission is, are you ready for us to bring forward authorization to spend the money to start this cleanup project?
I'll ask just, and commissioners wish to speak on that particular question, but I'm going to look around for head nods, mainly to see if, is that reflect what we want to do as a commission consensus? Commissioner Wagner? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, there you go.
So I'm going to parse this. I understand we need to spend the money. I understand we need to fulfill the obligation that we have on our lease with the Army Corps of Engineers. I understand that they are asking us to take action. Those things are not an issue to me. The only thing I'm asking for is what I asked for earlier, so I'll repeat it, because if it isn't coming, I'm voting no. And that is, because of the discrepancy in the amount of tonnage between what Burns and Mack has said and what KCTA has said, I want an understanding of how we are going to clear it, because my assumption is going to be that when you have a discrepancy that's that big, you are attacking the problem differently. And so whether it is showing me where we think the debris field is versus where they think the debris field is, becomes important to me. I need to understand that, to understand that we are spending $600,000 wisely, and are we taking care of the problem, or do we think we will be able to take care of the problem to some extent or not? Those are the things that I'm looking for if an ordinance comes forward, and I'll leave it at that.
Is it fair to say that you're looking for a deeper dive as far as analysis goes, as far as what it is we're talking, we're spending money for? Is that...
Actually, I think what might be beneficial, and we'll reach out to them, is have Burns and Mack here, that did the study, and provide that information from their perspective on how they come up with the estimated amount.
That would be extremely helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So maybe another...
The other thing I might suggest also, if, when we do that and come back forward, is possibly work out, I think Commissioner Carpenter had mentioned an MOU with the KCTA about the agreement to start cleaning up now, any new, because my concern a little bit when they said, well, when the project's done, well, the project could take a while, right, depending on weather, and if they're continuing to shoot, then they're continuing potentially to add to the debris field. So I'd like to sit down and talk to them about what can they do now, immediately, and start with any new that's not adding to whatever the field is that we're going to clean.
I would appreciate that, because it would seem to me that there has to be an ongoing mitigation strategy, and some of our colleagues have talked about this. So if we are doing this at the insistence of our landlord, then I think they would like to know how we're going to keep the place up over the life of the rest of our term. So I'll just say, I'm not sure I necessarily need this to come back in the form of a discussion. I mean, if you want to bring an ordinance forward with those things that I've asked for and others have asked for, that's fine, but that's what I'm looking for. And so, there you go. Thanks.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think a specific MOU would be helpful. That way, just everybody's on the same page going forward, too, and there's no more lack of clarification in terms of who does what. But in terms of the cost of this, I guess my assumption is, since a big driver of the cost is going to be the landfill, you know, deposits of the truckloads, right? Isn't it just going to be the case that if KCTA's estimate is closer to correct, that ultimately the cost is just going to be less, because we're going to have less truckloads and less landfill drop-offs? And so, I mean, I am curious, too, who's correct, and why Burns and Mack might have been wrong, or, you know, whatever, whatever. But like, I guess I'm just assuming that if we go ahead and give, you know, the go-ahead to spending the money, if it turns out there's a lot less out there, then there's going to be less cost incurred, and then we'll just not spend the remaining money. Am I thinking about that correctly?
Yes, sir. Exactly. I mean, we're just going to, we need to go off the higher end, because if it turns out it's that much...
Sure.
Or if we base it off on the low end, and we don't have enough money.
It would be like any project, right? So you're basically, you're authorizing not to exceed $600,000. If it comes in under $600,000, that's great. We do have projects that will come in under budget occasionally. Those monies come back and then become available, but they're ARPA funds, and so, you know, there would be some restrictions on how those could be spent, but we would certainly come back to the commission, give an update, which we periodically have been doing on ARPA funds, and make, you know, recommendations to what to do with any of those funds. So, yes, if we don't need them on this project, we're not going to spend $600,000 on it. It will stay in ARPA and be the ability to reallocate that either to an additional project or a project that is not coming in within budget.
Thank you. No, it's super helpful, and so I guess, long answer, short answer, long, whatever direction, yes, I'm a yes on giving direction for moving forward with spending the money.
Commissioner Withington?
If we're going to have Burns and Mack here, is it possible to get the Corps here too, to make sure that it is an environmental issue?
I can put the request in, sir.
And then also, I guess this would be for the KCTA, would you guys be willing to put in some money to have some skin in the game, since we're cleaning, you know, up the trash from the range?
I don't have the liberty to make that complete decision, but based on that $127,000 figure I shared with you, I'm going to say probably not, but that's why we are open to being responsible in the future, so we can appropriately budget for those expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
So, with, taking into consideration Commissioner Wagner's and Commissioner Carpenter's observations, are we ready to go forward, taking into the concerns expressed here? Is that how we want to instruct staff to go forward? Just head nods, or if you'd like to speak, please do.
I'd like to see Burns and Mack in the Corps.
I would, too. I think we need to hear an expla, I'm sorry, do you want me to activate your microphone?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we are going to move forward, I'd like to see Burns and Mack in the Corps here for questions, you know, just to make sure that we have definitive answers.
I would like to see some justification of that, those numbers, just because they're so dumb.
And I think Burns and, and the KCTA, it'd be in their best interest to come back when Burns and Mack is here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, are you in consensus with what's been generally said here? Do you want your mic on?
Extremely reluctantly, but I don't see any other option at this point.
Back against the walls to some degree.
And by the way, I do really appreciate you guys coming down for this presentation. That helped a lot.
Okay. Administrator, do you feel you have the feel for the commission to go forward in those lines?
We absolutely do. Certainly bear with us when we're talking about bringing two other agencies in and making sure the KCTA is available, but we'll coordinate those schedules and get them on an agenda for the commission.
Okay. If everybody feels they've had their say, we will go on to the next issue. Thank you very much for the folks who showed up tonight to impart that information. Next issue is parental leave policy from Human Resources. Administrator?
Yes, Commissioner. You may recall, a couple of meetings ago, it was brought up and requested of staff to look into a potential paid parental leave policy for our employees. So I'd like to introduce HR Director Kim Callahan, who will provide the commission with some information and a recommendation from staff.
Proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR Director. So we're going to move from skeet shooting to babies. This is the parental leave proposal. Let's see. There we go. So how does the parental leave align with the commissioner's strategic planning? First of all, becoming employer of choice. Paid time off for new parents provides time to nurture and bond... Paid time off for new parents provides time to nurture and bond with the newest member of the family. It's linked to better infant health and development. Many surrounding counties, cities, employers offer paid parental leave policies to recruit and retain new parents, and we want to recruit the best and brightest individuals to serve Clay County residents. Paid parental leave, leave will strengthen families and communities, which will make Clay County a better place to work and live. Here is a comparing parental leave policies surrounding counties and cities. I'm sorry, it's a little small. You can see Jackson County and the city of Kansas City, they have 12 weeks for the birthing mother, and they also have 12 weeks for the father or the caregiver. As you go down, you can see the city of Lyson has eight and eight, Lenexa has six and six, Missouri Court has six and six, MoDOT does six and six, North Kansas City has eight weeks and eight weeks, Olathe has eight and eight, Overland Park has six and six. And we go down to the state of Missouri, they have six weeks for the mother, and they have three weeks for the caregiver. And you look at Blue Springs, Gladstone, the city of Liberty, and the city of Mission, Kansas, they don't have a parental leave policy yet. Some of them are considering it, but they haven't come out with one. So looking at the financial, the fiscal impact, there's a potential increase in overtime or increase in contractual, but it will vary by position and department. Our recommendation is six weeks paid leave for the primary caregiver, the birthing mother, four weeks paid leave for the caregiver, that, for the, that would be the father or the partner for the new baby, adoption or foster. The parental leave must be taken within 12 weeks following the birth or adoption or foster, and it runs concurrent with FML. So we believe this policy can help to attract and retain top talent and lead to improve morale, productivity, and retention rates. So we're looking, if this is approved and agreeable, we would like to start this program in January the first of 2024. And I'm sorry that Commissioner Thompson is not here tonight, since this is basically her baby, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Commissioner Whittington?
Thank you for this presentation. Personally, I think, so you're saying six weeks for the mother, four weeks for the father, right? So personally, I think that it should be equal. I think it should be six and six. You know, there's, there's studies that show that, you know, that first, that first six weeks of a child is very important for bonding. You know, as a father myself, I only got three days at Cerner and then had to take, you know, the extra, for a total of two weeks was the max I got. And, you know, I just, I just know that it's, it sucked, right? Like, it's, it's, it's a huge adjustment, especially for your first, your firstborn. So, yeah, I would like to see that at six and six.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. First of all, I am quite sure our colleague is watching this right now on TV. So hello, Commissioner Thompson. But my comment is along the lines of our colleague. I noted on the earlier list, most, but not all, were consistent as far as the weeks were concerned. And so I was curious to, to know why we have the difference, and is that a matter of estimated overtime or, or the, the current complement of our, our workforce? I'm just trying to understand why, why you have that difference.
Basically, looking at, if the male isn't here, you know, replacing them, we're not going to be able to call an attempt for the highway department, you know, for facilities. So, but it's whatever you guys, you know, direct us to do.
Well, that's what I suspected, and so I guess my follow up would be, do, have we made an estimate of what that potential financial exposure might be of going from four weeks to six? Knowing that that's kind of imperfect, and I realize that, but just, you know, if it's, if it's, I guess my, my feeling would be, if that exposure is insignificant, however one wishes to define that, then I, I would concur with my colleague and say six and six works just fine, so.
If I could jump in?
Yeah.
Financial. Well, for, for two things. First of all, I want to clarify, when we talk about the caregiver for the four weeks, it's, it is not gender based, right?
Sure.
So it could be a female who has adopted a child, right? So in essence, the threshold that I think our policy started with, that it is, it is four weeks of paid parental leave. Two additional weeks would be given if it is a birth parent who obviously has medical recovery, you know, along with, you know, bonding with the children.
Sure.
So really, if you want to ask, I'd say, this policy says it's four weeks, but if you are the birthing parent and you have, you've gone through medical, right? It is when you give birth.
Sure.
You know, then we gave another two weeks of paid leave. You know, again, it runs concurrently with FMLA. When it comes to budgetary, the issue is, we budget for every position, full time, all year long, with full benefits. So there is no additional cost, whether they are taking six weeks or four weeks of parental leave, and they take the rest of the, the 12 weeks of FMLA under vacation or sick leave, you know, we have budgeted for that. So the additional cost for the county would be, again, if, because of having short staff, we may have to pay employees overtime to get a project done.
Sure.
Or to backfill a position, especially in the sheriff's department, where they have minimum staffing requirements. And so, you know, they typically will have a point of threshold that it's like, they've got to pay overtime to get people in.
Sure.
As, as Kim mentioned, if we have individuals in the highway department or the parks department that are off for this, you know, as a general rule, we're not hiring temporary, and we have no people to pay overtime, because they're, they're all working the same shift.
Right.
So it's very hard to put a financial to it. I would say my reaction is, I don't think financially, you know, it would be significant on the county's budget if this were to incur, because again, we budget for every position as if they're here the entire year.
Sure. Now, that's, again, just trying to understand the reason for the change or the discrepancy. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. So first of all, I do like some of these recommendations as compared to how they were first presented a couple of weeks ago, which I think was 12 weeks, three months, something like that. Couple of questions. How long, how much time on average would an employee, if he were to bank his, everything that he could bank, he or she could bank, whether it's vacation time? I'm not sure what all the terms are in the county, vacation, holiday, paid leave, overtime, whatever it is. They could bank up whatever they have. How much time would they be able to bank up, roughly?
Okay. So let's say one year, they get 2.4 weeks sick pay in one year, okay? And they would get two weeks vacation. So that would be for one year. And this, this, to qualify for this, you have to work here a year.
So for one year, you'd have two weeks, basically?
No, it, two, two and a half weeks sick, and then two weeks vacation.
Oh, so four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So four weeks total?
Yeah, almost four and a half.
Four and a half, okay.
If that's yours, just to hear at the end of the first year.
What if they've been here five years?
If you were here five years, so then you would move up to three weeks, and you still get two and a half weeks sick.
So five weeks total if you saved it all up?
But that, that's what your accrual would be for that year. If you hadn't used any time, you add those up for five years.
You can, so we can, they can add those up over the years?
Yeah.
And, and bank them more and have?
And bank it, yes.
Potentially months.
With regard to sick leave, now vacation, there is a cap on the accrual.
Okay.
And I don't, is it two times?
But, you know, for one to four years, it's 160 hours. So for, you know, four to nine years, it's 240 hours. So, you know, it's a good allowance.
So there, there is a cap on vacation, the max you can have on the books, but sick leave accrues, and there is no cap, correct?
There's a max at 1,000 hours.
What's the vacation cap?
It is, well, it depends on how long you've been here. One to four, four years is 160 hours, okay? And four to nine years is 240.
So 160 hours, that's a month?
No, your max for the, that's your max.
Right. So they can, they could, they could bank 160 hours of, of, of vacation time, which is 40, that's, that's four weeks, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so, and everyone gets almost, it's 2.4 weeks per year. Sick, it's the same for everyone, no matter how many years you've been here. So that, you could bank that up to 1,000 hours.
And of course, so this would be on top of anything that they have banked up?
They would still.
Someone could take, if they wanted to, they said they banked six weeks. They could take their six weeks off and then add another six weeks onto that.
Yes. They, they could use their time then, and that's what I see them doing with FML, filing for FML, where they could get 12 weeks. We would pay the first six weeks, it wouldn't come out of their accruals, and then if they need the 12 weeks, they could use their accruals for the following six weeks and get their 12 weeks.
So, so here's my, I, I realize I'm in the minority of this, but I, I just need to get this out, my thoughts on this. And, and so I love, I'm a family guy. I love the idea of, I love when private companies give this kind of paid leave to both the primary and the mom and dad, whatever the family unit is, both, both parents or, what's the word, caregivers, both ca, I think it's great. My concern is, and I think it's always important in, in our positions, is we're spending other people's money when we decide to do stuff like this. There's a couple of issues I have with this, and one is, first of all, we're, we are allocating money to a very select, we're giving a benefit to a very select few of our employees. In other words, this is just the employees that have babies. If you don't have a baby, you can't have a baby, you're not a baby years, or don't want to have a baby, you don't get this benefit. So we're only giving it to a very, very small group of people. By the way, that's another question. Do you know how many, roughly how many people we have, employees that had babies?
This year, we had three. Three maternity leaves.
Okay, not maternity, it's actually how many had babies? Because I'm sure there's people that didn't take mat, do you know how many?
That I don't know.
How many added dependents to their insurance this year?
Uh, I, I, I'm sorry, I could find that out, but, but, you know, I could run a report and find out, new babies, new births. But I do know we had three maternity leaves for FMLA.
Yeah, because I'm sure there's probably going to be more than that, and it'd be, I don't know if it's even much, probably the easiest, I don't know if you could ever get it exactly, but maybe the easiest way is who added dependents to their insurance this year. But nonetheless, it's a very small group that gets us, that gets us benefit, which almost isn't fair to the others. It's almost like we're, you know, it's kind of sounds bad to say, but we're rewarding people that have babies. And, and I get the whole premise we tied to, but, but, but when I think about spending the taxpayers' money, I think about, would I spend this myself? I think, you know, if my gardener, I don't have a gardener, but let's say I had a gardener, came to me and said, you know what, hey, my wife is expecting in June, and when she has a baby in June, I want to take the next three months off, but I want you to pay me still for those three months, and I want you to hire another gardener to do the, the work that I'm not going to do when I'm not there. No. No. And I don't think most people would, would take that deal. I don't think most people would pay their gardener not to work for them, and, and hire another gardener to do that work for them. I mean, I'd certainly give him a gift, maybe give him some money if he needs some money for his baby, that kind of thing, but, but no, I wouldn't do that with my own money. And so I have to think, why would I do that with the taxpayers' money? And do I think it's fair? And like I said, I'd love for them, I would love for our employees to have this. I think it's great. But do I think it's fair to tell the taxpayers, you have to pay for this, and it's only for a small, a small, select group of employees? Why not figure out some kind of benefit for all our employees, to make it fair for everybody? So those are some of the concerns I have, and I actually wish, wish Commissioner Thompson was here, because I know this was her deal, and I know she probably has some comments for that. I don't mean to, yes, I just wish she was here. But, but so those are, those are some of my concerns, and that's kind of my thoughts on this, is, is, I'm really not comfortable spending taxpayers' money on, for those reasons that I mentioned. I won't, I won't belabor it anymore, but you kind of get the idea of my thoughts. And I know I'm the, in the minority here, but.
And if I could jump in?
Yeah.
Commissioner Thompson does send her regrets that she is not able to be here this evening, that she is home ill. But I did speak with her about this, because this was one of the things that she wanted to bring forward to discuss. And I think she read through the policy, was comfortable with this proposal, especially as a starting point to offer to our employees, you know, once we, you can always change to the point about, and certainly it's whatever the commission wants to do, but if you wanted to keep both six and six, you know, or you could start with six and four and, and see what that looks like. But I did speak with her, and she did want to keep it on the agenda. She wanted the discussion, she wants to keep it moving forward, and she was okay with the proposal that, as presented this evening.
Are you finished? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I just want to agree with Commissioners Wagner and Whittington about equalizing the numbers. That, that did seem to be the standard way that, that other localities were, were operating. And I'll also go and just advocate for, and I might be in the minority in the other direction, Jay, but, you know, I'll advocate for going back to the initial 12, or should, should that not be the desire of the commission, perhaps eight? You know, Kansas City has managed to implement 12, so I think logistically, it could, it can clearly be done. They're doing it now. I noted that a lot of, that eight seemed, that a number of the cities, counties had eight, which felt to me like a nice sort of mid, midpoint in the, in the range that we saw. So that would be my preference, if we're going to implement the policy. I'd, you know, like to err on the side of, of being more generous, not less. And for me, it's, you know, I, it is certainly, you know, providing taxpayer-funded government benefit to government employees who have kids. And I'll, once again, suggest, you know, I'm, I think I'm the only one up here who doesn't have kids. There are a lot of tax dollars that go toward the kiddos in this country. They are expensive little guys and gals, and they don't pay taxes, and it adds up, certainly. But I think it's an investment well-made at every level of government. I think we ought to do more to invest in young families. I said this in our last discussion, we have a, a situation in the developed world, not just here in the, in the states, but across the world, that people aren't having kids anymore. And I think there are probably a lot of drivers of that, but one of them almost for sure, in fact, for sure, is financial. And I think the more you can do to financially incentivize people to have kids, the better, in part because, you know, our economy relies on a balance of, of, of workers and, and older folks who aren't working, and the more that you get off balance, which some countries are, have a much worse balance than we do. But if you see the demographic trends, that's the direction we're headed. So I, I do think it's a smart government policy to, to incentivize folks to have financial security and, and having kids. So that would be why I would go more generous, not less. Obviously, we're just little old Clay County, Missouri. We can't completely fix the overall situation, but we can do our, we can do our part. And so my advocacy would be to go as, as high as the commission is willing to go, and I guess I'll, I guess I'll just suggest eight for both.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I, I would agree with the eight. I, I think that's fair. You know, I don't look at it, Commissioner Johnson, as wasting taxpayer money. I, they're gonna, this is something that they've, in essence, earned as far as vacation is concerned. So if they want to take vacation, big deal, you know? For the pregnancy leave, we talk about how important it is to retain staff, how hard it is to keep staff. This is just a nice perk. You know, I wouldn't, if I were 25 years old, I sure in the hell wouldn't have a baby just so I could get six weeks off. But, but I, I think that those young people that are wanting to raise a family, I think that it's a great asset for the county to give them, six, eight, whatever we end up with, give them at least a leave, so they can take time with the child. That, that's vitally important. And I think it should be the same for the father. If there's a, a guy that's working, say, at the highway department, his wife has a baby, how great for him to be home and give her some support and, and get hands on with the little one, which often doesn't happen with the fathers. So, you know, all in all, I can't imagine any citizen, and I would hope there aren't any, that would be offended by us giving this, this benefit to the, our, our employees. I think it's a great benefit, and I'm all for us doing this. Think it, yeah, it's the right thing to do. Truly is.
I'd like to weigh in on this. I find myself agreeing with Commissioner Johnson on a lot of this. I understand, I understand the argument for this, and I, I would probably come down in favor of it, should that, should I be in a position to cast a vote on this. But I think Commissioner Johnson's point is a, a good one. Having had my own small business, I understand the stresses that puts. Now, we're talking about our business, so to speak, which is not a small business. We are a large. We are a large, a large business, or at least a medium-sized. Um, I, I do understand that argument, and I don't, I, I, he does not need, need me to defend him, but I, I don't think that Commissioner Johnson was necessarily characterizing it as a waste of money. I think he was, if I may speak to, if, if I'm, if I'm reflecting your thoughts correctly, I think Commissioner Johnson was saying basically that we have finite resources and we need to be um, judicious in how we expend those, and this might not be the best possible option. Is that a fair statement, Commissioner? No, thank you. Um, however, the other side of that argument is, we uh, we are living in an environment right now where the competition for employees uh, is a very real thing. Um, I think we, we are going to need to do something along these lines. Um, I, I think we should uh, do, do, I think when we're expending this money, we should be getting the biggest bang for our buck, which means finding what the sweet spot is for the biggest return on this investment. And I do see it as an investment. Where we're investing in is our employees, and that is, um, it's, it's a cliche, but it's also true, and that is, uh, our employees are our most important and our largest investment. So I, I think that we should be going forward on this just because of the realities of the uh, of the world we find ourselves living in. Uh, I am, I would feel more comfortable if we could get some kind of a handle on what the expenses might be. I realize projections are nearly impossible because it depends on uh, what department a given individual works in, uh, what their pay rate is, how viable is overtime to cover that as opposed to bringing in a temp. But um, I've got to think that because of so many other um, uh, governmental entities have done this, uh, but counties obviously would be our, our most relevant comparative. But when you look at what the counties do and what uh, the municipalities do, there has got to be some kind of a bump as far as what that cost would be, there has to be a measurable difference year over year. Um, it's not going to be a, be perfect by any means, but I would feel better having a handle on what those expenses would actually be. Even if, if I were to, and be inclined to go with the more generous route, I still think we have to have an estimate on what this is going to cost us. We just spoke about um, a cleanup project, and there was concerns about having a rather open-ended uh, expense, and I think this kind of falls into that similar category. Um, I would like to see, you know, maybe some statistical, surely the Department of Labor or someone like that would have some kind of a, uh, of an information so that we can at least benchmark this. It's going to wa, very wildly year to year, but um, it, it, I, I would just like to see us be able to get some, something of a handle on what our, our obligation is going to be so that we can approach it in a, in a more fiscally responsible way. So I think, I think we need to go this direction, but I, I share Commissioner Johnson's, I think, fiscally cautious uh, attitude. Uh, with that, Commissioner Withington, I believe you are seeking recognition.
So I'm fine with six or eight. Uh, I just, I, and it's not going to be a make or break for me to support it, whether it's six or eight, but uh, the father needs to have the equal, same equal amount of time as the mother, and uh, that, that's something I will put, fight for on this. I just think it's really important. I think that dads get overlooked in this process, and it's a, it's, you know, it's just as important for bonding as it is with the moms and stuff like that. So whatever, whatever we agree on, I, I just want to make sure that the fathers have the same amount of time, or the caregiver, what, whatever we're, whatever we're talking about, so.
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just, yeah, I tend to agree, six and six, moms and dads treated similarly. Um, I, I'll, I'll just note that um, to the financial piece, if um, past performance suggests what will happen in the future, three is pretty de minimis, as far as I'm concerned, as far as uh, impact is concerned. I'm not sure, uh, we necessarily invite more people to use, uh, you, you know, to, to use the, a benefit. Um, I guess what I'll, I'll end with is um, clearly there is a market that has developed for this benefit. Um, whether we agree or not as to whether or not it is something that everyone uses, which is an argument I understand and get, um, there seems to be a market that suggests this is a benefit that's desired. And whether or not um, one chooses to work for us, whether or not we have the benefit, don't know, but it seems that that's where the market is going to. And as we've had discussions as far as salaries are concerned, and being competitive in that fashion, the benefit package needs to be just as competitive. Um, I would just simply say, I'm happy to let Jackson County and Kansas City be the market leaders for the moment, um, and see how that works out. Uh, I don't think we necessarily have to be there, but if it's six or eight to be in the middle of the pack, I'm pretty ambivalent as far as that direction goes, so that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, just my last comment, I just want to clarify, if there's any pregnant women out there in our workforce, I'm not suggesting, you know, get your baby and get back to work. Um, but what I do think is that we have a system in place with, between our vacation time, our sick leave, whatever it is, that, that if planned properly, you can accumulate those and take month or months off, which is exactly what I did, me and my wife, that we did, we planned accordingly. We didn't, we didn't apply for FMLA, we just, I had vacation time, I saved up, I didn't go on vacation that year, because I had a baby, uh, which was better than a vacation for me. So um, I think we have systems in place already that, that allows our people to take time off, paid time off, as well as, if they want to continue to take time off unpaid, they're allowed to do that as well. So anyways, that's just all I wanted to say.
If there are no other comments, I, I'm assuming that you administrators are seeking some consensus instruction.
So um, my take is consensus is same, or, you know, the primary caregiver, or the caregiver. Um, and so the only thing I'm not sure of, and, and I tried to keep track of, is it six or is it eight? Um, you know, um, and we'd be happy to put in whatever number that you desire and bring that forward for you, but I, I heard could go six, could go eight, I heard eight, heard eight.
Eight, I'll say eight.
Eight, so we're hearing eight?
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right.
Uh, the other thing, by the way, and um, I, I find myself agreeing with Commissioner Withington, and that is, if we're going to do this, an equalization between which, you know, between the parents, caregivers, whatever name we're using at the moment, um, I think seems, seems fair, is that the consensus of our commission? That if we're going to do this, that it be divided evenly between the two identified caregivers?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Great. Thank you.
That would conclude, unless there are further comments, that would conclude that discussion item, which brings us to our final discussion item, which is uh, Commission Infrastructure Committee, and this is going to be, um, I will be, when we get it introduced, I will be recognizing Commissioner Withington to begin the discussion, since this is his item. Uh, would you care to uh, kick it off, Administrator, so we can kind of get started? There's really not much to that, is there? Kind of stole your thunder.
I actually will defer to Commissioner Withington, who asked that this topic be um, put on the agenda for the commission to discuss.
That's pretty much what I was looking for, is what you just said. Uh, what I'd like to do is to go ahead and have Commissioner Withington outline his thoughts on this matter. I would then like to, and I want to give the, the counselor a moment to kind of make sure that he is prepared, and um, what I would like from you, uh, 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 Counselor, is this would be, if, assuming that we go this direction, we would be talking about an official subcommittee of this commission, so what I would like you to do is to be able to give us some ideas of what are the legal and constitutional ramifications of an entity like this, and what are some of the advantages and disadvantages, so that if we go forward with this, we might be able to use that legal framework to tweak it into the most effective uh, possible uh, effort. So uh, with that, Commissioner Withington, you have the floor.
So we've discussed roads and bridges and infrastructure, you know, over the last several weeks, but um, I brought this topic up back in, can't remember, March or April, about possibly doing this. Um, now that we're going to get a five-year road plan, I think it's, I think it's wise that this commission start to uh, show some leadership when it comes to roads and bridges. You know, we've pretty much have had, been hands-off, and we've let staff do everything, but um, you know, the buck stops with us. We're the highest branch um, on the, or level on the organizational chart, so you know, if, if people have issues, they're calling us. So what I would like to see is, I would like to see this commission uh, set up a committee of two eastern and one western commissioner. Uh, and I say that because, you know, the western district needs representation, but you know, the roads and bridges are primarily in the eastern district. And what I would like to see is, I would like to see this body uh, work with staff to start applying for funding at mark, more, to be more, you know, get projects on the list, but also to oversee the implementation of the five-year road plan that's going to be included in this uh, in this year's budget, and you know, look at different ways that we can do, that, like, you know, Commissioner Wagner talked about front-loading the funds and everything last week. We need to start doing something different when it comes to roads and bridges. We've been doing things the same way, and it, you know, everybody still complains, right? So it's time we start doing something new, and it's time that this commission starts to demonstrate some leadership when it comes to roads and bridges, because we're the ones who are ultimately going to be voted on because of our, the condition of the roads and bridges. And you know, it's our job, you know, we're, we're the board of trustees, basically, for this organization, and um, it's time that we show some leadership.
Okay. Uh, Counselor, if you'd like to give us just kind of some of the legal ramifications, and I'd like to open it up to the commission at large to go ahead and, and begin the discussion.
I, I think probably the, the primary thing I'd want to address uh, on, on the topic, if you appoint three, uh, just understand that under chapter 610, any appointed subcommittee of this body also becomes a public body pursuant to the sunshine law. So the meetings of those three would be noticed up, 24, 24 hours notice, do your minutes, public, uh, you know, the public would be entitled to come to it. Um, and um, just as a, just a, I guess, a little cautionary uh, uh, idea, that those three could not meet to talk about roads in any other context, any two of those three, excuse me, couldn't meet to talk about roads in any context other than public, because there's a, you know, grouping of three. So whomever they are, two of, right now, any two of you obviously can go to one, one commissioner's office and talk about roads. Um, those three, uh, those, you know, two of those three could not do that going forward.
Just, uh, just to kind of get a clarification, so if, if two members of this um, uh, subcommittee were, say, on the same board at mark, the same, whether it's TTPC, whether it's STP, what would be the impact of that? So I mean, we would, we would have, would that be something we would need to consider when we're looking at membership on a potential board?
Is that, do we all already consider that a public meeting? Do we notice those up? I don't know how, if we do, then they're, they're noticed up, they're public. Yeah, I assume they are.
So we would be piggybacking on their notice, is that?
We probably would.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clarification.
If they're noticed up by mark, we would probably, this, the safest thing to do would be to piggyback on that notice.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you. So I don't have an opinion with regard to uh, whether doing it as an official committee that would trigger uh, the requirements that Council Graham just spoke to, or something more ad hoc, like the committee that you all put together on 190. I, which of those is better, I don't have an opinion on, but I think doing one of them um, makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, obviously, we're, we're hearing from a lot of uh, residents of the county um, on a recurring basis, obviously, several commissioners have uh, shared their concerns as well. Um, so it makes sense, to me anyway, to put three of you all together and have it be some kind of more official process to uh, come up with some answers for how we can, you know, to Commissioner Withington's observation, how we can do things differently that, that produce a, a, a better outcome, at least in terms of residents being happy and satisfied with uh, with the roads. And you know, I think a lot of things are going to contribute to that. Uh, I think those GIS changes that we talked about earlier, and just sort of making it more accessible for people to go online and see it, and see, you know, kind of real-time updates, I think that change alone, I think will make a tremendous difference. Um, but to Commissioner Withington's point, you know, I do think we should do a deeper dive into what Commissioner Wagner suggested in terms of, you know, being able to get earlier in the bid process by having some money in the account. Um, you know, I don't know for sure if that will produce results, but I think we should at least look into it, and if it does, I think that'll hopefully save the county some money. Um, and you know, we've talked about strategy on making sure that we're doing all that we can on applying for all available grants, that sort of thing. So I just think having a, a, a group of folks, and I think it makes sense uh, to have one western and two eastern, uh, having that group really um, working together to come up with uh, recommendations to the full commission, I think that can only be a good thing, and I thank Commissioner Withington for the idea, and I think we should make it happen.
Commissioner Lawson.
Okay, well, you know, y'all know how I feel about the roads. Um, I've driven more than I really cared to drive, but happy to do it. The, I think this is a stellar idea. I, I would like, and, and I don't get, like, just with our, our committee that we had on 190, there, there wasn't a big deal. We had everybody and their brother in those meetings, only three commissioners, I will promise to say. Um, but, but nevertheless, it was just a, it was a great sharing of ideas and concepts and coming up with a good document, which I hope we will approve shortly. But at any rate, what I see this, I would see it more, the three commissioners not having to have it like an arm of, of this, more like our 190 was. And um, and then have meetings with our highway department where we share information with them, sitting down, they tell us right to our face, guys, you know, we're short of funds, or whatever, or let's work this way instead of this way, a collaboration between the highway department and the commission. And he's right, a thousand times right. We take the heat when it all comes down. We hear the complaints, and when we're running for office, which isn't the big deal, but when we are, then you're going to hear, well, I called you and you didn't do anything about my road, or you know, you fixed his road, you didn't do my road. But if we have some kind of a, a good feeling between ourselves and the highway department, then, then I think we can put those fears to rest, we know when things are going to happen. If something big comes up, they'll know about it before we will, but nevertheless, you know, we can talk about it, and then we can take that to the public. I, I just think it's very important that this happens, but I don't think that we have to be restricted, oh my gosh, we've got to have this in open court, or anything like that. I just, can't we just have a committee that, that there's only three of us on it, if there, whoever those three are, if there's only three commissioners on it, we could go to lunch together and talk about something, couldn't we? With the sunshine, I, maybe I'm wrong.
Absolutely. We, we, absolutely, at any point, any three of you could go have lunch, have dinner, and talk about substantive issues, in my view. But, however, if this body appoints a group and gives that group a direction-
Oh, I see.
-and a charter, then, then I think you've now created a subunit that I, I believe needs to comply with the sunshine law. So yes, at any point, you could do a less formal, we, you, you know, you don't need, if two or three of you want to, to, uh, get together and talk about roads, you don't need the permission of the full body. You don't.
I just like, I think-
But if you're getting permission from the, the, and authority from the body, you do.
Well, you would want the sanction of the, of the commission. You know, you'd like that, so that you feel like they're supporting, everybody's supporting you. But, but to have, to have them appoint, maybe he's right, you do it, you do it.
Yeah, I don't care if it's an official-
Commissioner, you want me to put your microphone on?
It's already on.
Oh, good.
Here, I'll hang.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I don't care if it's an official or, and, you know, kind of like your SB 190 group, but you know, just something that the commission recognizes that they're working on the issue, is what I want. Basically to have, you know, the blessing of the commission to work, and I don't want to micromanage staff or anything, we want to work, you know, work with staff.
Exactly. Exactly. Collaborate.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you. Um, well, the first, first point I think has been made by my two colleagues over here. I think it's a matter of, uh, if you'll, if you'll forgive me, the, the flavor of the committee, um, as far as uh- the committee, um, as far as, uh, what it is composed of and if it is an issue of, we want to create a working group that is made up of staff and commissioners to go in a direction, yeah, then, you know, I think that's, that can be sufficient. Um, where I guess I'll get to my main point is probably similarly to what I said in the first time that we discussed this, and that is really a matter of scope. Um, what I perceive is we are struggling and our, our residents are struggling with understanding how we are making certain decisions as to what kind of road and where that road is. Um, but we've brought up other things, um, including finance. We've talked about strategically, what investments do we want to go after with 92 Highway, 291, you know, kind of feeds into that discussion. And, and so I, I, I think, to me, what is important is to understand what aspect, or is it all aspects of infrastructure that this working group chooses to take on. And, um, I would note that, uh, if I recall what the administrator has said previously, December 13th is the date that, um, the highway department will come in and talk about a number of things, not just their budget requests, but a number of things as well. Um, I mean, if you want to be more specific as to what that would be-
No, absolutely correct. It is part of the budget process. So we'll talk about the road and bridge fund budget, but as part of that, before we get into the five-year CIP, um, I've asked the road and bridge, they're going to come in and do a really in-depth presentation about the street maintenance and preservation program. So to your point of, when are those decisions made? How does a, a chip and seal road get elevated to an asphalt road? How, when and where and why does a gravel road become a chip and seal road? So there are policies and there's information, um, but the, I think historically, the county is, we have never really put that on paper and said, here, here's the criteria that we use. And so we've talked about, let's have that, let's present that to the commission. You all can say, we, we don't agree with that, that criteria, that certainly we can talk about that and do it and what it would look like if you want to change it. So that presentation on the 13th is going to be very in-depth, more so than just talking about road and bridge fund budget and the five-year CIP. But it will also be those five-year roads, what roads are in each year and why, based on the criteria that we're going to talk to you about.
And, and I, I appreciate that and, you know, it's the, it's kind of the old Wizard of Oz, you know, what's, what's behind the curtain. And I think it is, uh, important that we understand what, um, is behind the curtain. Um, because I, I think if at the end of the day, the only thing that is acceptable to our residents is simply, everything's got to be an asphalt road, well, ain't going to happen. Uh, hate to say that, um, but it's true. And so I, I guess I, I ask about the December 13th, um, uh, presentation because to me, hearing that drives a question of what is the scope of a committee that we may set up? And, and I agree that if we find that some of those things, whether how, what, or how we derive a five-year plan, or how we finance a five-year plan, you know, if there are things that we hear that are obvious holes, then to me, that suggests, that's probably a scope of a working committee. Where, where, where I have trouble currently is I can imagine a whole bunch of scopes, um, which may or may not be important.
So, so mine would be not 92 Highway, not, uh, 291, anything that this commission has jurisdiction over. You know, we don't, we don't ma, MoDOT does 92 and 90, you know-
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so, so what I was thinking was, and, so here's my thing. The highway department, and I'm, I'm not attacking anybody, I don't think that they do a good job. I, I, we've heard that from people.
I gather that, yeah.
Yeah. And, and so I don't trust them to implement the five-year plan. I think we need to demonstrate some leadership to make sure it actually does get implemented. But all I want to do is, I want to see this commission help to oversee the roads that we actually have jurisdiction, that we maintain-
Sure.
And have oversight over.
So, so, so if that is the case, um, that suggests to me a more ongoing look at the operation, which, and it could be done a number of ways, I suppose, but to me, a committee that is to kind of overlook and make sure that something is being done over time as opposed to coming together and setting policy operates differently. Um, in which case, I would, I, I may argue that, well, if the job of this committee is to, for lack of a better term, manage and oversee, that's different than a working group operation. Um, and, and so, understanding that scope of the committee then, to my earlier point, is important to me to understand because that scope suggests how it's composed and how it operates. And so to the extent that we have a pretty firm idea of what that is, then kind of tells me, okay, well, then it should be more like this if it's really more of an overseeing body than working through a strategic plan. Um, but I've said enough, I'll leave it at that.
Uh, just for clarification, a follow-up on what Commissioner Wagner said. So are you talking about what, I guess, and this might not be, this may be an imperfect definition, but are you talking about oversight on essentially county roads?
Yeah, just anything that this, anything that we as a county would oversee. So, you know, MoDOT controls 291, 92, we wouldn't have jurisdiction over that.
Okay, so that would be outside of the purview of this particular group?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I realize we disagree on a number of things. I do, I, I would want to register my disagreement on your assessment of the trustworthiness of our staff, uh, of a road crew, but I, again, I don't know that this is the place to have that debate. I just wanted to register my dissent.
I wasn't referring to the road crew.
I'm sorry, uh, who, of our highway department?
We can't talk about personnel matters in open session from what I was, I have, I have questions about the leadership of the highway department. I'll just say that, okay?
We would just agree to disagree on some of those issues. I apologize if I mischaracterized, I was just trying to get a feel for it. But again, uh, dissent is, uh, and disagreement is not necessarily a bad thing. Commissioner Johnson, I believe you sought recognition.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first for the counselor. Um, so if there's a, a three-member committee forum, even if, even if the commission doesn't give them any authority whatsoever to make any decisions or to, to make any policy or anything like that, i- it still would require-
That, yeah, that's the way I read chapter 610, is if, if this body appoints a group and gives that group a, a task, a charter to move forward, uh, and maybe just report back, for example, that's, that, that to me creates a subunit that requires, uh, compliance with the sunshine law.
Okay, and then so when we take like the, the SB 190, that's more of a, I think the term should, ad hoc committee, that's-
That, that was not appointed by this body and at no point was a majority of this body participating, yeah.
Right. And we still wouldn't have a majority of this body participating.
Right, but you're talking about appointing three specific people. So now you've created an entity.
Okay, yeah, so I would be in favor of something like we do with the SB 190. You know, I, I don't think it needs to be a big formal notice and all that kind of stuff. That, I think it's a great idea, but I don't know if it's for the same reasons or not. The way I envision it is, first of all, I think almost everybody up here, if not everybody up here, ran on the platform of, hey, br, br, infrastructure, roads and bridges specifically, and we want to do better, we're going to fix, we're going to fix them for you. Um, just like just about every politician has in the world, but nonetheless, um, so we have to do something. And one of the things that I've noticed, and first of all, I think most of the complaints that, that we all get is, the majority of those complaints are about roads and bridges. Um, and I think it's important to have that dialogue at this level with, uh, some of the, some of the leadership from, from the highway department and, and the county administrator and, and maybe even some worker bees in there or something, just to have some discussions, just so we can understand things better. I, I, we, I don't think we have any authority whatsoever to give any direction to the highway department, that's, that's Diane's job. Um, so I wouldn't be, I, I'm not looking to give any direction or, or tell them what they're doing right or wrong. It's, hey, help me understand, you know, so that when I have constituents that come to me and say, hey, you know, what about this and chip and seal and, you know, now I understand what chip and seal is and I could explain what this process is and, you know, we're not, they're not done yet and, and those kind of things. A lot of, I think, is just communication. There's, I sense that there's been a little bit of, of friction, uh, between this, this body and, and the highway department. I think it'd be nice if we had a little bit more discussion, informal if it be, if you will, on, hey, this is what, this is what we're struggling with, what are you guys struggling with? Help us understand your job better and we'll help you understand, you know, where we're coming from and maybe we can collectively figure out some, some, some creative solutions to do even better when it comes to roads and bridges, that kind of stuff. Uh, and by the way, I see Carl's back there, welcome back. Uh, Director of Hard Department, he sees Beckton in the corner, says, good to see you back. I'm sure you didn't miss us at all, but welcome back anyway. But I thi, I, I see that it's just kind of a collaborative, collaborative, uh, brainstorming idea, you know? Jason's got a lot of, Commissioner Withington's got a lot of great ideas about, about highways and stuff, you know, and I may have a lot of great ideas too, but if I present them to them, they'll say, idiot, it doesn't work like that. You know, let me explain why, why you're way off base on this, because that's not my area of expertise. Um, but maybe they can give us a little bit more of their expertise, help us to understand, at least a few of us, understand a little bit better, particularly those that are, that are really interested in the road and bridge stuff, understand, hey, that this is what they're up against and commission, this is how you can help us. You know, you want more roads and bridges, you want, you want this done better? This is what we need from you to help us get that done. Probably going to be money, but this is what we need from you and this is our hiring issues that we're, that we're, that we have. Um, this is the problem we have with employment here, this is the problem we have with, well, we can't get, you know, the machinery that we need, this is why we have to contract stuff out. Lot of stuff that I just don't completely understand and I think this would be a great opportunity to help at least a couple of us understand that better that we could share with the rest of the commission. But, um, just sharing ideas back and forth and communicating better, I think, with Hard, because that's the big one. That's the big one for us. That's the big one that causes conflict, that's the big one that we're getting complaints about. And I'm sure if we're getting complaints, they're getting many more complaints than we're getting, but help us collectively, how do we come to a solution that's going to make our constituents happy, even though we can't get them all done and we're not going to get asphalt roads, you know, in every road, but you know what? At least we're going to show them, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and here's, you might not like it, but here's the explanation why, uh, and this is what it costs, and, you know, so on and so forth, but I think, I think it could be very helpful. And again, I don't look at it as any kind of direction for the hard department, because I don't, that's not our role, uh, bottom line. But I think, uh, to ju, to Commissioner Withington's point, we ran on this, we're, we're, we're the top dogs in, in the county, the buck stops here, so we gotta get as involved as we can to, to see, okay, what don't we understand about this and what can we understand so that we can help them, uh, do the job that they want to do? And, because I know their, that their hands are tied in many aspects, uh, that we don't understand. And so, bottom line, I'm very supportive of it, I don't think it has to be a real formal committee, I think more like this SB 190, you know, ad hoc type deal where, you know, hey, just get a group of us sitting down and, and like you said, I, I like, you know, maybe three of us and, and, uh, obviously the, the, the leaders from the hard department, I would actually like to see some of the workers in there, you know, some, that just have some ideas, hey, this is what we're facing every day. Um, these are some of the problems that we have and, and this is what we can use from the, this is how the commission can help us on these kind of things. And let them know, hey, this is the problem, you know, we're getting complaints that you went out and filled a pothole and two weeks later, that pothole's there again. And they can explain either why that's happening or they can see why we're frustrated and maybe they'll, something will change, I don't know, but that's, I think there could be a lot of good coming out of it as long as we approach this, hey, this is a communication tool to help us understand each other a little better and see if we can come up with collective ideas and how we can move things forward for the, for the highway department and more importantly, for the, for the roads and bridges in our county.
You know, um, you, you said something the other day when, uh, the people came into the court, I felt the same way. We had, I'd been working on trying to get that 184th Street, I think it is, off of 33 Highway since March, April, early April, something like that. But nothing happened, really happened, until those folks came in and spoke their minds. The next day, things are getting done. Now, it would have been great, I think, if as I got those calls coming in, we could have sat down and said, here's the problem, these guys are driving me crazy, help me. And then we could, they could have said to us, well, look, here's your plan, here's your card, um, and, but you, you figure out, here's your plan, and then it would have been nice for us to be able to say, folks, hang tight, we're going to do it in three weeks or four weeks or a month or two, you know, whatever it might be. I think sometimes when you can give somebody an answer, any answer, but there's a timeframe attached to it, it just kind of makes them realize, hey, somebody cares and, you know, we want to do the right thing. It seemed as though all of the complaining and everything that we did didn't do what we hoped it would accomplish. So I think, and, and I'm like everybody else, I don't want to dictate, but I'd like to collaborate and say, help us, here's our projects, here's our problems, tell us how we can accomplish it. If it's not doable, then what is doable? So then we could go back and tell people what it is. And, and I think that we've struggled through this since we all came into office, so it's been almost a year. So it, it is definitely time to do something, you know, to be proactive instead of just running and doing something because somebody came in and start beating their hand on the podium up there. So I think we need to do something and, and I do think it needs, whether it's appointed or however it is done, it needs to be done right away and you need, we need to start seeing things happen. We got to make stuff happen. That's what they put us in this office for and every darn one of us that ran to a man or a woman said, we're law enforcement, roads and bridges, fiscally responsible for the money. Those were our three big things and, and we spend more time on roads and bridges than on anything else. So the time has come, we better do something and do it quickly, so.
Excuse me, we don't have any more, uh, people queued up. What I would like to do is just to summarize a little bit and then recognize, um, Commissioner Withington and then try to divine some, um, some instruction for, uh, our, our staff to proceed if, if that, um, is, ends up being what, what this commission wants to do. Uh, it seems to me we're looking at two different alternatives. One would be, uh, an officially appointed three-person panel of this commission, which, of which, uh, council tells us would have certain responsibilities under the sunshine law. The second option seems to be more along the lines of the Senate Bill 190 effort that was made, which, uh, would not trigger those. Certainly if there is any, I, the, the trigger seems to be if they are appointed by this board, uh, to, as a subgroup of this board, that would trigger sunshine considerations. Am I correct on that, Counselor?
Yeah, that, that's how I would look at it and I think at, at that point, there'd be a resolution of this body appointing commissioners, say, you know, one, two and three to, to be the, uh, uh, highway, road and bridge, you know, subunit, subcommittee, standing committee, yeah. Now, and to be honest, if, if the approach is not to do that, there's nothing you guys need to vote on, there's no resolution, there's nothing that would come back. Then any grouping of commissioners can work with Diana to, to work through road and bridge issues. Uh, that, that's so-
Instead of me.
Yeah.
The only limitation on option two, the SB 190, would be not to have four commissioners or more gathered to discuss business. At that point, we're talking about the sunshine requ, uh, shun, the sunshine restrictions on this body as a commission.
Right, if you go that route, the only body involved for sunshine purposes is this body. And then, yeah, you need, uh, four to trigger those obligations.
So really, I think what, what, I, I, I guess I'm looking for, um, and Commissioner Withington, I, I think we'd be looking to you to see what your preference is on this, but I think that what we're looking for is if we go one route, that it would be, would, would require some action on the part of this body, therefore instruction to the commission. Um, the Senate Bill 190 would, uh, route would not necessar, would not require, in fact, we would not want to really do a resolution because that could put us into that. So we've really got two basic paths that are before us, obviously a third path would be to go on as we are. But I guess what I would like to do is to go ahead and get Commissioners Withington's, Commissioner Withington's thoughts on this as, so that we can start moving towards some kind of an instruction of, uh, of, um, of staff. Um, by the way, Commissioner, once you've spoken, another commissioner-
Scott with-
Okay, I was going to make you aware of that to see what you wanted to do.
Well, it's-
Okay, Commissioner Wagner, let's see if I can do this without being- Okay, Commissioner Wagner, let's see if I can do this without being completely, I'm just going to, I'm going to activate both your microphones, you activated also.
You got it, thank you very much. I, I just want to return to that notion of, of scope, because as we talked a little bit earlier, what, what I gathered from that is, is not just creation, but then execution of over time. What I heard from Commissioner Johnson and others was more of understanding processes and then informing those processes to get to some sort of direction, which I take with the SB 190 model, you kind of figure it out, you're done, and you let her fly from that, from that point, if, if, that's a, that's a scientific term, by the way. So what I'm hearing is competing approaches to this committee, and if I, if I'm looking at this incorrectly, I'm happy to be corrected. So I, I just, as we kind of say, here's what we want, I just want to reconcile what I heard as different approaches.
So, so the way I see this is, I see it more as an oversight. Like, I don't want to be telling them what roads to do. They're, they're supposed to be the smees, right, says the matter expert? They should be coming up with a plan, they should be, then us as a commission, as this committee, we would just be there to oversee it, make sure it's getting implemented. They need help, they come to us, we see what they need, then we are able to provide them whatever help they need. But I think it needs to be, and I'm fine with doing the SB 190, you know, just, I think that'd be more flexible. I mean, it doesn't have to be anything official, but we just need to make sure it's only three of us.
No, I, I see, and, and maybe just for the county counselor, is, is, do you, would, would a working group à la SB 190 be sufficient to what you're hearing from our colleague? I just want to, yeah, you know what I want, so.
Yeah, so I think if you go the, the SB 190 route, really, any Commissioner who wants to participate may, at the point in time where you designate who it is, I think that's when we really get in trouble with the Sunshine Law. We've, you know, whether you want to call it a formal or informal, but here's our subcommittee, that creates, I think, that problem. But I think the SB 190 approach is, and I think really what happens, just like that, the folks who are interested, who, who are invested in that one issue will be the ones that participate. And, and I think as just a, as a practical reality, that's how it will shake out.
And, and so there is really no concern as far as duration? You know, if, if, if part of the issue is, we, we want to make sure what direction has been set is actually performed, that's not an issue?
If I understand your question, no, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
And just to reiterate, this, this is only to oversee what the county is, not, not any other infrastructure.
Gotcha.
So if, in an effort to go ahead and round off our discussion, Commissioner Withington, am I, am I right to assume that you are leaning towards the Senate Bill 190 model? Which would require no action?
I think that's more flexible.
I believe it is, it also allows for a more fluid membership switch out. So if someone decided that they had served on that and they would like to move on to another issue, another person had to come in without having the formality of a, of a commission, official commission action. So, first of all, let me go around the table and make sure that is that the consensus of this commission that we, that that would be a route that would be, and we're not crossing any lines by just doing this part, are we? Administrator, counselor, okay, good.
Yeah, no.
We're, we're still good, right?
Yeah, you're fine, absolutely.
Okay, and then it would, and then it would be limited to three members at any given time? There could be, obviously, it would, it would be up to that group to decide, but as long as they remain under the ceiling of three maximum Commissioners, no issues?
That's correct.
Commissioner Wagner, head nods, good, good, okay. That being the case, it seems to me unless Commissioner Withington, that we have no instruction to give to staff at this point on this matter, but we have?
No, I'll follow up with you, Diana, yeah.
Okay, so if you have any, any closing remarks?
Nope, that's it.
Very well, that concludes our last discussion item, that brings us Administrator to reports.
Yes, Commissioner, there is one report that is included in your packet, that's the financial statements audits for the Transition Family Visitation Center. And so I want to give a shout out to the Auditor's Office for doing this scope of work. When we met with Judge O'Hara, and, you know, they are great about pursuing grants for their programs and operations, but they were somewhat limited in applying for some organizations because they didn't have an official audit. And it was going to cost substantial to hire an outside firm to do an outside audit. And so Auditor Herbert volunteered along with his staff to go in and do an audit of their financial statements. And so you have that before you, and so we're very pleased at that, and have given it to the court and Judge O'Hara, and hopefully they will be successful in getting additional grants.
Very good. That completes reports, that brings us to Administrator comments, Administrator?
Just a couple of items to remind everyone that our county offices will be closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day. We want to certainly thank all our veterans that have served, and thank them for their service. Also wanted to let everyone know that the 2024 tax bills are actually now online and available for the citizens to go and review those, certainly and can pay online if they so choose. The actual printed invoices, bills are at the printer now, and we expect those to be in the mail next week. So, but if anyone is curious about their tax bills, they are welcome, go out on the county's website and go into the Collector's website and have access to their tax bills. And then the third item, certainly we want to express our appreciation and thank you to the voters for their support Tuesday on the 911 device service fee, so that's all I have.
Very good, that brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yes, sir, I know it's late, two things real quick. What was number one? Well, I'll start with number two. I had the opportunity to call 911 today, it wasn't really a big deal, but I was at, at my house, and there's a, there's a sheriff's deputy out in front of my, I have a gated driveway, he's out in front with his lights on, looked like he pulled a car over, but I couldn't tell if he was just, had the car pulled over, or if he actually wanted to come in my gate and he wanted me to open it. So I thought, well, this is going to be an opportunity to call 911, see how our dispatch works. So I called 911, I just want to report that I had the most pleasant conversation with a dispatcher. Didn't know who I was at first anyway when I called, and he was extremely professional. I think some of you know I've worked in dispatch before, I ran dispatch, and I still worked as a dispatch and 911 call receiver, and it's a difficult job, and it's easy to get cranky and, and grumpy. And he wasn't, he was very friendly. Fact is, he didn't even work for us, he worked for North Kansas City, but he was filling in because we're shorthanded, so I asked him some questions about that, about some operations, about how many dispatches we had working today. Anyways, I just wanted to say it was a very, very, I was very, very happy with his professionalism and the way he did his job, so I know the captain's not here, but I actually talked to Will Smith, or Will, Will Smith, Will Aiken today, and, and let him know the same thing, so whoever, I don't even get his name, but he did a great job, and I appreciate that. Oh, the second thing was, talking about roads, I had a friend of mine at church stalk me the other day, said, hey, just want to let you know, she said, the county just repaved the road in front of my house, and it's beautiful, I loved it, they did a great job, I'm so excited, I'm so happy, so there's a positive one for you. I said, well, thank you, I said, we don't get those very often, we get the complaints, we don't give very many thank yous, I said, so I'll make sure to pass it on to the folks at the highway department, so. She says, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thanks, I just want to say Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans out there. I spent all day today with my 92-year-old grandfather, who has served during the Korean conflict, and America's the greatest and most important country in the history of the world, and glad to be here, and glad, very grateful to all the veterans who have sacrificed a lot to, to give us this country, so, thanks.
Commissioner Withington? Okay, Commissioner Lawson?
The only, only thing I'd like to say is Happy Veterans Day, and I just want to say, I am so grateful that that 911 passed, you know, that was just something I felt that we desperately needed financially and, and for growth down the road, like you say. You know, you, you call that 911, you're usually in desperate straits, you need help. And, and for our people to be so professional, which I, I really have to say, everybody in the Sheriff's Department that I've run across is extremely professional. So I, I felt like it was a great plus for us and free up some money for our budget to fix more roads or whatever else we might want to do. So, hope everybody has a great Veterans Day.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, well, since you can't say thank you enough, I too will thank our veterans for their service and their commitment to this country. Also thank the voters for getting out there and supporting us, and to this commission for getting out there and doing their part for a successful conclusion. And a thank you to my colleague to my right, who led the charge and said, we need to do this, and she was correct, and appreciate her rabid support to make this happen. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We all go to a lot of events, I was at one that honored some veterans, it was a very nice event, and they all are, but one of the things that struck me was, a couple of things, actually. The first one was that as each veteran gave some background as to what his or her service was, the level of humility is astounding. One of, the, the last person, Dwayne up from, in Smithville, said that he noticed that some had, had mentioned their service, and that was, you know, gee, I was just working in a non-combat capacity and that sort of thing. And he made a point, I think, that is one that is, is worth repeating, and that is this. He said, whether or not you were in combat, whether you were, whatever capacity you were serving, he said, you all have, we all have the same common experience, and that is, each and every one of those individuals raised their right hand and swore to protect and defend the Constitution of this nation, and at any cost up to and including their lives. So it's not, it is obviously the service they rendered, but in, in almost a more basic way, it is the fact that they said, I will do this thing, I will put myself in harm's way. Now, you know, for some, that was not where they were put, but they served where they, where they were told to serve, and they did their duties, and I think there is, there are no non-heroes when it comes to our veterans. They are all people that, that deserve the highest admiration and, and the highest amount of gratitude. As you say, we cannot say thanks enough. A couple of items, we all go, again, to a lot of meetings. I was at the Northland Regional Chamber, I just wanted to report back, even though it's not directly related to the county, but there is a partnership being put together between the Liberty Hospital and the KU Medical Systems. What, that was, that information was in fact released this morning. I wanted to update the commission just for their information, they are doing a letter of intent, they are going to be finalizing details by end of this year, and they are looking for a February announcement when that would be complete, obviously depending upon negotiations. And they would be looking to complete their integration into those two systems between the years 2024 and 2026, sometime during that window. They would be looking to complete that transition, so, again, it was a very, you know, a great institution in this county that provides a service to all of our citizens. Secondarily, I was at the Clay County EDC General Board meeting, and the, the topic of discussion was the strategic plan. The strategic plan was voted on, it is going to be released after, there were a couple of suggestions, so once those, those changes are made, I would look forward to seeing it come to our commission, is here so everybody has a chance to understand what is going on. So, once they have completed those, those alterations and amendments that were made at that time, we will be able to see what that product looks, what that work product looks like. And then finally, I want to thank our, our, our auditor, not only is he a great auditor, but also a veteran. So thank you for your service. We had a discussion last week on the, on the money from Mark, and he crafted a, I talked to him Friday morning, a response was crafted, and he sent it out, I think it was the most appropriate route was to have him send it out. And it was identifying the, the funding for regional preventive maintenance. That was, as the auditor pointed out, under the Surface Transportation Program Committee. And I think that, you know, I would like to have had more detail during that meeting, but I'm not a member of the STP committee, so I could only speak from what knowledge I had. I think that, you know, while I would like to be on top of things, it's hard for me to speak in great detail right off the cuff on a committee that I'm not a member of. So with that, I think that concludes our meeting, we are adjourned.